Thank you for your attendance so early in the day. And it's really good to be getting on with the first of the transitional committees. So this is the very first meeting. We've got quite a busy agenda. And for those of you that are tuning in or seeing what we're doing here today, we are the Transitional Committee number three. Our responsibilities are climate change, economy and development. So other than social care, we have all the major evils in our portfolio. So we will have a busy, packed and significantly important agenda to work through. That means we've got a lot of work ahead of us, guys. Sorry to break it to you. So if we crack on with the agenda today, this is the first meeting of any of the transitional committees. We will be working through this as we go. We can make this up as we go along. There are no bounds, there are no limits. It's up to us to see how this works and we can come back to that. So I'll go on to the first bit, welcoming housekeeping. Well, we've done the welcome. Housekeeping, we're not expecting any fire alarms. So if there is a fire alarm, please make your way to Tudor Square, which is now the muster point. We'll make sure that we all go down in an orderly manner and no stampedes or anything. So that'll be good. Apologies for absence.
Yes, Chair, I've had apologies from councillor Aptizam Mohammed.
Thank you. And I don't believe there's any items that we need to exclude public or press from. And for the record, there are no members of the public in the balcony at the moment. We may get more people, but I don't believe we've had any public questions or petitions issued. So declarations of interest? There are no declarations of interest on today's agenda or any of the bits here? No? Okay, excellent, so we can move on from that. And minutes of previous meeting? Several for GRI, post-council, standard items. We haven't, this is the first meeting, there isn't any minutes, so we don't have to worry about that. The only thing to be cognizant of is the stuff that's been presented in full council that kind of limits our remit and our scope. So quickly moving along, I'll hand over to Alice to give us an introduction to the Transitional Committees. Thank you.
Hi. Yeah, so in your papers you've got a report that we're actually trying to make sure goes to all the transitional committees. And it's introducing them. And the main paper in it, which is on your page, it says thirty-three, twelve, eleven, I'm not quite sure. But it's headed up Appendix One, Transitional Committees Briefing. This is something that went to the governance committee. But it should set out really the, what these are all about. And it's based on what was approved at full council some time ago now. And I think the thing to point out, there are various sections in here, is that this is about new ways of working. They are only here for this year. Their advisory, temporary, not a shadow committee. A space to improve how cross-party engagement works in decision-making. A conduit for consideration of local issues arising via local area committees, who are just starting up as well. And a space to pilot new ways of working. I've kind of looked through and from my perspective supporting this officer, I feel it's very much about exploring new ways. And some of that is, we're kind of tempting a little bit today with being a bit light on papers and more heavy on discussion. And it's about finding the best place. You're an advisory committee, so it's about checking in where you can, when you can advise and how best to advise the cooperative executive. But it's also about being constructive and collaborative. And remember, these are a learning and a test bed, if you like. And it's about feeding back to the governance committee on what works, what doesn't, what is missing. But that's not to say that that's what they're all about. You are doing this through very important current items on the agenda. There's no lightweight to the items that are presented to you. There's just perhaps a slightly different way of approaching them. So please kind of keep hold of that. And if any of you have any particular questions, there isn't anybody here, say from the governance side, but it's very much about taking forward, we can take forward those questions to officers. But also there's a conversation to be had about how best you want to collectively feed back learning from these particular transitional committees that you are a member of and feed that back into the work that's ongoing for, towards shaping the new committee system next year.
Thank you, Alice. So for members here, I'm going to throw this open to the floor. If there's any clarifications or questions or concerns you've got, then please raise them. Martin?
Hi, yeah, it's not a concern or a clarification, it's just an observation. You said we need to be light on papers and heavy on discussion, which I agree with. However, given what councillor Jones said about the huge breadth of our remit to make the best use of our time, reports, pre-reads or some description, I think is going to be absolutely necessary just to make the process work. It's just an observation.
Yes, if I might, Chair. I use that phrase partly because you do have fairly light on papers today. And I wanted to test that. And if actually what we're saying is because of the nature of the items and the in-depth, then it is better to have more pre-briefing totally. That's a sensible request that we will make sure happens.
Yeah, it wasn't a criticism, it's just, yeah, we've got one heck of a lot to do.
Absolutely agree, Martin. It does mean that we are going to be taking on a lot of homework. So burning the midnight hour hours and doing lots of reading, unfortunately, I suspect. I think that that's part of the movement away from the previous system, the strong leader system, where all members will need to be upskilled. That means educated and made aware of the pressing urgencies that we all have. So yes. Anybody else? Tim?
Yeah, we need to, I know it's light on papers, but we do need some. Because I just, you know, as I keep saying, as a most recent council member of a council that did have a committee system up until 2014, then, you know, I expect lots of extra papers because that's just the nature of the job. But we do need to have, you know, because I see three things, briefings are getting in the work programme today, I hope. And I need to have been able to read it to give some informed comments on things rather than what I'm hearing and what I'm trying to follow on a PowerPoint slide. So I think we need to have some sort of papers or links to papers in good time so that we can then make some objective and informed decisions.
I'll heartily agree with that one. Thank you, Tim. Anybody else got any observations? No? Okay. So being as we, we'll take on board what has been said. Absolutely, we do need to make sure we've got everything available in a timely manner. I think that is going to be a big requirement for officers to give us the cognizance and the significance that we will need on that one. But we will make sure we communicate that. So if that is that bit covered off for now, then we can look forward to the next item, which is the budget. So if we could bring in Kate and officers are now coming in. Good morning, councillor McDonald, and hi Eugene and Laurie, how are you? So, welcome to the first Transitional Committee, making history. And part of that history is the approach to priority budgeting. Off you go, over to you, take us through it. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and it's a pleasure to be here at your first meeting. You just said that before I did about the historical, if not hysterical, occasion. So thank you for giving us an opportunity to come in and talk to you today. I know you're going to have a very busy agenda. The reason that we wanted to come and speak to you today is that we are obviously embarking on the budget process. We're already involved in it, we've already started it off. But as part of the process, we wanted to start to work with transitional committees. We're not going to get it perfect this year, but we wanted to have a conversation with you about what you think the priorities are from your point of view for both going forward, both in terms of growth and in terms of what are potential areas that we might look at for making savings as well. So it's not going to be perfect today, but it was really, and I think it would work better in future when you've had a whole year of talking about what's important in your strategic priorities and so on as well. But we wanted to open up that discussion. It's not going to be completed today, but, and we're here to listen, actually. So my colleagues are going to say a bit more about the process and also about the challenge as well. But thank you again for giving us an opportunity to come here this morning.
So just talk a little bit about the budget context. Because one of the challenges we always face and will face is how we align prioritisation to a kind of ongoing difficult financial context. I think everyone knows after ten years of significant funding constraints, we've already done a lot and tried to maintain shape about what's important still for delivering for the people of Sheffield. But that issue about kind of funding constraints continues. You will no doubt have seen in September to go report to the cooperative executive, which sets out the challenging financial position we've got this year. Just over forty million potentially overspent, the biggest challenge we've faced in the last ten years, even though every one of the last ten years has been difficult. A lot of that is around, we had a lot of pressures during Covid, which the government did actually give a lot of money for, which allowed us to balance last year. So interestingly, we've gone from being in a balanced position and relatively stable last year very quickly to significant pressures this year. And that is because of a lot of the ongoing and pent-up demand issues in Covid, which the government basically gave one-off funding for. But we have, as you'll have seen from the report, significant issues particularly around children's social care and adult social care. We're not alone in that, it's an issue across the country. Not every authority has both children's and adults to the extent we do. We do have a particular pressure as a big city. But the issues underlying it are pretty consistent across councils across the country. You will have seen as well a government announcement about having resolved adult social care for the future. What that announcement did for our finances in the current position and for next year is pretty much nothing. There is nothing towards the pressures that we have on adult social care at the moment. It's all about the future and the promise of money for the NHS, which in due course, some of it may come back to us for additional costs. We do not yet know what they are about the changes to people's eligibility and fee pay. So it's all about potential money in the future for additional costs. There's nothing for current pressures. The government has said that those current pressures will be covered by council tax, which means Sheffield residents or efficiencies on top of the efficiencies we've already done in the last ten years. So that's a significant challenge. So how does this all relate to prioritisation? Obviously, we've got the one-year plan, Laurie, I'll talk a little bit more. On one level, it's difficult to think about priorities when you've got those budget constraints. But actually, it becomes even more important actually because, and if we are to make significant savings, and we are going to have to make significant savings because those pressures of forty million roll into next year and potentially increase, it's going to be even more important to do more of what we've already done about being really clear what it is that we need to prioritise and what it is that we can, with as least harm as possible, make reductions or efficiencies on. So that's just a bit of the financial context. Laurie?
Chair, I'm Mike. Hi, I'm Laurie Brennan, I'm the head of policy and partnerships. So the idea is obviously over the coming months, the budget process is well underway. But with the new transitional committees getting underway now, the idea was to try and start having that open dialogue and conversation with members about, we've got a one-year plan, the climate change, economy and development section's got a number of priorities in there. And over the coming months through your meetings, you're going to hear all sorts of challenges and issues and where you're there to offer some policy advice to executive about the challenges we face as a city. But also, I think what we'd really like to hear from members and through the work of this committee is to try and look at what you think are critical priorities and how we use our overall investment in our budget. But also how we, in some cases, deprioritise things. Because clearly there's such a significant pressure, as Eugene's just outlined. We can't do absolutely everything. But I think members in the committee are probably going to get a sense of the critical things you certainly want to invest. You think we should be invested in to particularly tackle climate change and also obviously to try and invest in the economy, particularly coming out of the pandemic. So I think it doesn't all have to be done here. One of the things I was going to suggest, Chair, is that it might be the committee want to take some time to think about some of the concepts and particularly given the agenda items today about the city centre and about the ten-point plan. You might want to reflect on some of that. And then perhaps working with the chair and with one of our policy officers, we could try and put like a submission into the budget just to suggest what you might want to do. But that's a suggestion and members may have a different approach. So effectively, really thinking about what's in the one-year plan, particularly linked to this committee and actually what are your critical priorities from that? And what would you like to see us try and, to the extent we can emphasise that in the budget as well? Clearly, it's a budget and a major policy tool and it's a statement of where we're going as a city. So I think it's a really good opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Laurie. So we've obviously heard a bit of the context and we had some of this in full council yesterday. We are dealing with pretty much a blank canvas at this stage. So going forward, we should be getting more of a steer on the work plan of the council from next, this next month, will we? Are we getting something from the cooperative executive? Okay, so, so yeah, we've got officers here now. So anybody's got any questions or challenges or clarifications they want, go for it. Barbara?
Yeah, right, you've actually told us nothing that we don't know already, there's a huge deficit. The priority, what's your priority? Is it to somehow cover the social care budget? Or have you already got some priorities identified which might help shape our thinking?
I can comment on that, councillor Masters. What we're trying to do, and before we got into this very, you know, the pressures emerged, we're committed to actually moving to a much more strategic approach to doing the council's budget every year so that it was a budget which was informed by policy priorities and not only some of the other pressures that are already in the system. So obviously it's more difficult this year because we already have significant pressures. So the point is actually, it's a blank canvas and your role in the future is going to actually be to do this. It's not going to be perfect this year, but we wanted to start that dialogue, both in terms of learning from having that dialogue about how we do it better next year. But also if you have any specific suggestions, they will go into the mix and help to inform the executive's decision on what the budget priorities are for next year. So it's part of that engagement and involvement process. It's not about consultation, to be honest. You guys have got an opportunity to shape it in terms of what the key priorities are for the council and how we reflect those in our financial decisions and not just in terms of our policy decisions.
Which implies to me that we've got to put forward a business case for bidding, if you like, for this money or bidding for a sort of something, a priority slot in the budget. And that implies that we've got a lot of work to do that may not sort of bear fruit. So unless we have a bit more guidance about what we can, you know, what's just basically non-considerable, can't be considered.
Do you want to say something about the technical side of it, Eugene?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, obviously, there will be a significant process of trying to pull together all our existing priorities and budgets to feed through to the cooperative executive. But as Kate was just saying, I think what we're trying to do is this is an opportunity to broaden out that approach and get submission to that. We have budget processes normally that are quite linked to a kind of cabinet process and advising that. And the change to transitional committees is an opportunity to broaden out that conversation. And so that's why we're attending each of the committees. And to pick an example, on your agenda later, you have the ten-point plan for climate action, which obviously there is work from mine and other teams going in to support Tom Finnegan-Smith and officers were working on that. That will be a case in point. As part of that, we will be thinking, how can we make sure that we are shifting our actions, not just our budgets, but the way we do things to allow investment to achieve that ten-point plan? Now, so there isn't going to be some huge pot of money with the financial context to invest in lots of things. But so the question will be working with Tom and this committee input into that. How can we change things within existing resources? How can we prioritise, deprioritise, change activity to achieve that plan? How might we also, because there are other funding sources outside the council to access potentially, city, region, national ones? How might we pick issues that we, or projects we want to do that achieve what we want to do in Sheffield but attract funding? And I think all those questions are open for discussion. And I think that's the case. So as well as just, rather than just a kind of formal business cases, I think it's about input to thinking around how are we trying to achieve things that we still want to achieve despite the difficult budget context? Does that help?
Yeah, and this comes back to sort of my colleague's point about without sort of advance notice of what's going on, then it's hard to make a judgement call. I mean, transport happens to be an interest of mine and you're saying a lot of work is being done on it. And yet I'm not aware of a lot of the work which might impact on any decisions or suggestions that we make. So I think it's, this is what you're saying, there's got to be a better dialogue. But it means that we've got to be able to call on officers to update us sort of at maybe short notice to stop us going down a blind alley. And is that part of your brief that you will support us in that way?
This year, I think, is going to be, this is the first stage in the process. And I would have, in subsequent years, when you're making decisions as opposed to advisory at this point, it can build on the work that you're doing throughout the year. In a way, we're sort of starting this pretty cold and we're doing it because we want to do it and we think it's the right thing to do. It's not going to be perfect this year. So over the period of time, obviously, you'll get financial and policy support during the year and it will build on that. So it's not about coming up with specific bids at this point, councillor Masters, but perhaps once you've had an opportunity to talk about the ten-point plan for climate action, you'll be thinking about, and what are we going to do about it then? And some of it might be, as Eugene said, we're going to help to do bids out, you know, to other places. Some of it might be this is a top priority for the council, which means that other priorities have to be shifted around. And then collectively, when we get to the budget meeting, we'll all have to agree that. So it's really, I suppose in a way, instead of us getting to the budget process and arguing about what the real priorities actually are, we're trying to form them in dialogue with the transitional committees.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. One thing I would like to reflect on and comment on, hi Doug, is that we haven't actually got a mandate from the cooperative executive. As Kate has quite rightly pointed out, we are looking at a blank canvas. So I've got Chris and Tim indicating. One thing that we did say, and I'd just like to pick up on what Laurie was saying about, we can't do absolutely everything. So that will mean that, do we feel that we've got sufficient officer resource available to support this endeavour? And then I'll bring in Chris and then Tim.
I think, well, obviously, we've got officer capacity to support the transitional committees in their work this year. There's a couple of things in here which do link back to the things we've said in the one-year plan as well about, obviously, this is particularly about trying to think about priorities in this year's budget. But the other things we committed to in the one-year plan include trying to move to a more prioritised approach to our budget setting, as Kate alluded to. I don't think you can ever do that in one year, it's going to take some time. It's quite a big shift, so you're moving towards an outcome-led or a priority-led budget. And as part of that, we need to do a new corporate plan for the city, which we're committed to in the one-year plan as well. So I think the conversation we're having and we're starting to have here is part of that process of starting to think about what the organisation's priorities are beyond this year into the next, into the coming years as well. And I think that links to the budget this year, but it's also starting to think about where we're going as a city in the longer term as well.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll open the floor to Chris.
Thanks, Chair. One of the big issues through all the pandemic and subsequently is the amount of income that we lost and that we generated that helps to maintain some of the services that we provide. Where are we in relation to trying to recover some of that income? Are we ten percent there, twenty percent there, that type of thing? And are we also looking at new ways to generate income that, future, to try and assist with budgets? I mean, we lost a lot of income through the markets. If you think about the way we had to shut them down, then slowly we built them back up. But there are other opportunities within that, which I'll bring up with later with Naline. But other ideas that could generate income to support services in the future?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Yeah, absolutely. Loss of income was a massive issue during Covid, not just for us again, but for everybody. In fact, the government put in place, one of the sources of funding they provided was a specific fund that compensated for loss of income. So all the things you're talking about, markets, car parking, leisure, was a huge issue for us in terms of the cost there, as it was for all councils. And yes, that is part of what we're starting to look about in the budget. Yes, as always, we'll look at potential new sources of income. I think one of the difficulties we have is those new sources of income or the possibility of increases in charges as part of a budget will be made more difficult by the continuing legacy of the pandemic. So where businesses or other entities are still getting back on their feet, it will be a really difficult choice about, as with businesses themselves that are opening up, what are they doing about their prices to kind of help recover? But at the same time, not put customers off or cause other businesses or people difficulties. I think that will be quite an interesting point in the budget. I think you were also asking about income recovery. We suspended, as did a lot of councils, a lot of our debt collection and rightly during the pandemic. That has restarted, but it has restarted carefully, recognising the fragility of a lot of people's income. And our debt collection policies, as always, are based on trying to understand and differentiate. We take debt collection measures against people who won't pay rather than people who can't pay. Now, that's always a difficult judgement, but that is the guiding principle that we have on all our significant income streams, be it council tax, business rates, housing rents, car parking charges, whatever. And that will continue to guide us. I think you put your finger on it, it'll be an interesting question. So where could we develop income measures safely that do not hit against that legacy problem? Will be an interesting policy choice to look at.
Thank you, Chris. Tim?
Right, okay, a few things then. Just talk me through the budget process. Is it intention that for each committee, you're then going to present a revenue budget to a potential proposal at an appropriate time, you know, just from past experience, sort of November, December time? Then you're going to have some items that are going to be potentially, that would be under the Aussasist Committee but devolved to LAX, that would then be fed into that? Would that, how do you, can you talk me through? Would that, how do you, can you talk me through the exact process that you're looking at having, not just this year but in future years, of how you're going to lead from the drafting of a budget to drawing up of it and then moving forwards? Talk me through the process.
Thank you, Tim. I'll start. At the moment, the way I see it, there's going to be the technical bit that's going on the whole time. I mean, obviously, officers have already started working on that. We've got a timetable, we've got to, all of the executive members will be looking at the portfolio areas for which they're responsible. So that's going on at the moment. The new element is actually the transitional committees in all of this. So we won't be presenting, I do not envisage, unless we decide otherwise, that it's going to be that detailed this year. The way I see it is that a lot of these ideas and proposals will all be fed into the mix for discussion, costing and difficult decision-making about it. So that's the point, really. It's not about negotiating, it's actually about listening, discussing, getting as wide as possible, understanding about what, and having to distil as well, what the council's real top priorities are for next year's budget. And that will refine over the years. It is a difficult thing to do, particularly, I think, particularly when you have, you don't have an awful lot of scope at the moment, but as I agree with Eugene, that when resources are scarce, prioritisation is even more important. So that's why we're here, is actually to start that discussion about what the council's real priorities are. It's not a question about negotiating on different parts of the budget. That's my, that's the way I see it. Eugene might give a more sophisticated response. I've given you a political response.
I don't know about sophisticated, but I think, Tim, what you're describing is probably what we will have next year, not this year. Because, I mean, coming back to Barbara's question, and this is transitional, so we're not envisaging, because as officers, I think we wouldn't be able to kind of provide a lot of the results, that we are, we're working in that way from a blank sheet to kind of get each committee doing detailed budget processes. That would, on top of everything else, frankly, too hard to do. So, and so the budget process this year will largely, as it normally has been, will be working with the executive to produce that. And that will come through, and scrutiny will, has still got a role under the constitution at the moment, and through to full council. What we are trying to do, as I was saying with this conversation though, is to start an early thought about how committees might input in your advisory role, to involve you in the process a little, and to kind of tease out what your key thoughts would be. So back to my example of the 10-point plan. In doing that and thinking about how you comment on that, that can go into how we are thinking about how we're building, how we deal with that into next year's budget process. But I think in a broader, taking early baby steps way, for us to help learn about how we might do this completely differently the year afterwards.
The other dimension I would say, Tim, is that you've got two other executive members here as well, and you're in a position to help shape and inform what they're part of, the budget and so on's going to be as well. So it's, I would say it's interactive and high level this year, rather than detailed and sort of business plan led. I mean, you may find that unsatisfactory, but we are where we are, and we're actually trying to move forward with it and learn from that process at the same way as involving as many of the transitional committees, well, all the transitional committees. We're doing the rounds.
The next thing I want to ask is, talk about the 40 million overspend or shortfall or whatever you're going to call it. Because one of the things, is it widening month on month? Or is this a figure that you're looking at, that that's going to be the shortfall if things stay the same when we have our budget setting meeting? Because one of the things that struck me right at the very start of Covid, when we first had our meetings, was that the leader of council said something like, we've got a little extra money than other councils, because in effect, we've been cutting deeper than we had needed to over the years in order to make sure that we add some more in the budget. Is it, how, you know, just talk me through that bit.
The position formally reported to September COB Exec is like, we've obviously been, we start tracking the budget earlier, and it's likely been in the same area since the start of the year. So it's not getting worse, and we're obviously trying to find areas to mitigate it. But, you know, at the same time, social care pressures can vary. I mean, particularly in children's, you'll be aware of this, you just get a few difficult children's cases through, and you have a significant impact on that budget from the nature of the care that is often needed. But it's been in the same area. What we have to try and do is see how we can bring it down. I think what you alluded to rightly is a combination of, last year, we were relatively stable, we didn't overspend. A number of councils did overspend last year. The money the government provided us, together with the actions we'd taken in previous years, allowed us to keep the budget balanced. And if you had asked me nine months ago, in fact, there's evidence of it, we're probably the most stable core city in the country financially, and we have reserves that we have used constructively to keep us in that position. Our problem is, the extent of our pressures at the moment is moving us very quickly from, and this is the danger with finances, relatively quickly from relatively stable. So if that 40 million does not go down this year, continues into next year, and there will probably be more pressures next year, then we will rapidly find things unwinding, because you can reuse reserves to support a budget, but they're like savings, you can only use them once. And that's going to be the challenge of the budget process. And how far we can mitigate and slow that impact. Alongside the wider context of the country, we're in a difficult position, but so are a lot of councils. And back to what I said about the social care announcement, I still have a question, at what point, the impacts of social care and the impacts it has on the NHS nationally will wake things up, to be honest?
Can I just say that I think the position was clearly articulated in the medium-term financial plan that went to the executive last month? And so it's, you know, we're very clear, this is going to be a very, very difficult budget. So we've been, that's been clear for a while now. We've been clear with the executive and clear with the public as well, and I was very clear yesterday at council as well. But so, we still have to talk about priorities. So that doesn't mean to say we throw our hands up in horror and say, all right, let's chuck all this money at social care and don't think about any of the other really important things that we have to do, which is again, why we're coming here today and to all the transition committees, to try and make that a balanced discussion about our, what the council's strategic priorities are and how that's going to inform the budget going forward.
Thank you. I think it's also helpful to remember that overview and scrutiny will still look at the budget as it goes forward. So there is still a pre-existing mechanism for that to be monitored. And this item is about the conversation around priority budgeting going forward. You did raise something that I think we will have to come back on to repeatedly throughout this, how we link into the local area committees, how they bring evidence to us and how they understand what information we're getting. I've yet to get my head around that, I'll be honest. So that will be evolving. But thank you. And I've got, Martin, you've got a question?
Well, feedback, Chair, actually. I mean, officers asked for our thoughts, so just a few of those. This may not be the right choice of words, but you have my sympathy. I mean, trying to develop a budget in these unprecedented times with these financial constraints, when the council is undergoing a major change to the way it works, that's not easy. So anything I can do to try and help in a constructively critical way, I'll do it. So, yeah, just wanted to say that. You asked for feedback and thoughts about strategic priorities? I completely agree that social care, be it adult or child, has to be a strategic priority. We know that it was a priority before the pandemic. We've now had the pandemic, and for all sorts of reasons, be it medical or economic, the pressures are just going up. So clearly, that's a priority going forward. The other one I would suggest we need to think about very carefully is how we as a council support and develop the economic recovery in Sheffield, thinking particularly around business, because that has an impact on people's wellbeing, it has an impact on household income, and even more indirectly, then a demand on council services. And some of the information we've had in council and from officer briefings, I would suggest that a strategic plan for how we can support small business would be particularly important, because the number of people that are employed through small businesses in Sheffield is greater than the big business. So if we're going to target support, I think that's one area we should look at very carefully. And the other one is, I'm sure we wouldn't do it intentionally, but we also need to be mindful of, in terms of some of the actions and priorities we might take, we need to be very careful that we don't do anything that could hinder or slow down the economic recovery in Sheffield. So, you know, a good friend of mine's a doctor, and he said the first thing he got taught in medical school is, first of all, do no harm. Now, there are lots of things that we need to address, including the Plan for Climate Action, but we just need to be mindful that there's a lot of people that need help out there. One of them is the business community. Thank you.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you for your sympathy. Secondly, I think you just drew out something important in terms of kind of what we're trying to talk about, about prioritisation, because you're right, you know, in our thinking about the budget, how are we going to deal with those legacy issues? How are we going to, to Chris's point, think about the income that is in the city, the way businesses, because business generation helps the wealth of the city, household income, it actually potentially helps our income if we think about income sources, you know, it's not directly, it doesn't directly go, business rates stay the same regardless of how well a business is doing. That's one of the issues with business rates. But actually, back to that point about other income generation, and those things and the financial health of the city, linked to the council's financial health, and I suppose back again to the climate change paper, how are we thinking about that business recovery and the way the council is performing, linked to what it is that we are prioritising in that 10-point plan? And I think drawing those things together is just really important. And that's the kind of thing, I think, with the committees, we kind of try and seek some kind of input or some thoughts and advice around how that hangs together in terms of pulling a budget together with the executive. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I've got Diane, I've got Barbara, Diane and Paul. I'll bring in Diane, Paul, and then your last word to Barbara, and then we'll wrap this one up hopefully. Diane?
Thank you, Chair. I don't know where the question is in this, but it's just what I've been sat here thinking as we go through. So it's usually, it's my usual approach. Thinking back to where we are now, the priorities have, we have our priorities, we have our one-year plan about developing this new way of working and moving from a strong leader model to a committee system. So, I mean, we as elected members have to take individual responsibility for that, because we have to do the research and bring the learning to it. We have the 10-point plan for climate action, which is, which has to be a key, key priority. And all that together will change the city. But then again, we have changed before, haven't we? If you look at the city in the late 70s, early 80s, in the 70s, a quarter of the jobs went when the steel industry changed and when the mines were closed, and Sheffield changed from then, it was a sad and sorry place, and it changed from then to be a city driven by big industry, to somewhere now where small traders, small, medium enterprises form a much larger part and give us a much different character to where we were before. And we know that we've got a perfect storm now, we've got 10 years of austerity, we've got Brexit, we've got the pandemic, but we have done it before. I mean, thinking back, I remember a discussion a number of years ago where we predicted that if we didn't make significant changes, we probably wouldn't be solvent by 2018. And we overcame that, and we've now, we actually managed to push that back five or six years or whatever. Now we're getting a little bit nearer to cliff face. I think this is a useful approach, because if we keep our eyes on the priorities and we do our own learning and our own sharing, we will emerge with a Sheffield which is different again, but much more robust and able to move through the 21st century. And it's that that I'm hanging on to, the one-year plan, the 10-point plan for climate change, because, you know, we have, we've got to develop that healthy, thriving, different economy, and if we do that, we can get through. So not a comment, I mean, it's a very exciting time, it's a very, it's terrifying time, but I have confidence in the offices that we, you know, we have, that have advised as well in the past and will no doubt continue to advise as well in the future. And I suppose it's just a clarion call to us members to adopt the new way of working, as it were, and start to generate that energy that will carry us over. Thank you for your indulgence, Chair.
Thank you, Diane. I think we do need a bit of optimism and not everything's bleak to look at, so I really appreciate that. So I don't think there's anything we need to particularly come back on there over then to thank Diane for that one, and actually lifting us from the gloom a little. Thank you. Paul?
Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to make a comment and ask a question as well. It was a really nice positive message that, and I think, like, we do have to be optimistic as well, that it is a pretty difficult time. But what do you think, you know, one thing that we did get out of the last 18 months is all of these new connections in our communities. And actually, we're very wealthy, we're rich when it comes to community in Sheffield. And I think it's going to be really important that we do things with the public, with the people, and we don't sit in our ivory tower and come up with this new system and continue to rain down dictates on them, you know. We may, it keeps coming up for me in the council, where the council does something really well-intentioned, thinking they're doing something for the people, and then it turns out that the people read it as they're doing it to the people, you know. And so we have to be really minded that we do it with the people. Regarding our local economy, I just thought it would be worth mentioning, we are doing work on kind of improving the terrain for startups. Sheffield doesn't have as many startups as some of our other core cities, but we also have a very good retention of startups, better than most of our core cities. So we want to keep that, but also make it easier to start up, really. And it is true that we need to support the small local businesses. I think something like 85% of Sheffield's businesses have fewer than nine employees. So, you know, that is the engine of the economy. So the question I wanted to ask, and forgive me if it's a silly question, but, you know, all of these problems could really be solved if the government just funded the councils properly. And I just wondered what's, yeah, sure, yeah. I just wondered, and you also, I think you mentioned some of the other councils with even bigger problems than us, or somebody did. And I just wondered if any work has been done to kind of have a collective approach to government with the other authorities or what's been done in that way? Thank you.
Yeah, Paul, thank you. That's kind of what I was saying about social care, there is nothing towards the current problem on social care. It appears to be being ignored. And yes, we do a lot of work, not just core cities, we do a lot of work with an organisation called Sigoma, which is metropolitan councils, the LGA does work, there's a lot of good work done, it's put to government. There's a lot of good work done, it's put to government. And there's lobbying, but it's a question of whether it's listened to. I think that's not the reason, we carry on doing it, and I think it's also really important that within the city, people understand, and I think people do actually, the constraints. But we've got to keep doing it. But it's a difficult question to answer. There's a body of evidence about what some of the problems are, which doesn't get answered. But eventually, I suppose the way I've always thought about this, the government's found it easy so far that those councils who have gone into difficulties in Section 1 Form 4 notices, which is the formal notice about spending, there's always been something else to point to, some major governance failure which excuses the government. I think in the next 12, 18 months, there will be an increasing number of councils who go over the financial precipice where that's not easy to do and, you know, that's unfortunate. But I think our objective has always been, I think it's what Diane was saying, is to kind of make sure we've got strong financial management so we're not going over the cliff first, so that when somebody wakes up to the situation that actually exists, we're able to take advantage of that and still here and functioning. And I think that's what we're all focused on doing.
Two points, Paul. One is I draw your attention to the Local Government Association contribution to spending review. That's sort of very clear in terms of the overall impact of pressures, long-term austerity and so on, that it's actually had on local government and makes a very strong case for increased investment. And the other thing is, in addition to all of the networks that we're involved in, and everybody's telling us the same thing, you know, we're not out of line with anything that's happening elsewhere, except a little bit in terms of combination of children's and adults pressures. But we're also working at a much more strategic level as well with other northern councils to try and influence the government as well on the whole levelling up agenda.
Thank you, thank you, Paul. Barbara?
Thank you. It's almost a sort of a summing up for you because it touches on what Martin said, what's Paul said, what's Chris said. Really, sort of, I believe that, you know, the council should set a framework within which businesses can prosper and therefore, sort of, you know, residents can prosper. So what contact do you have with businesses? Because at the moment, you have contact with lots of other organisations similar to this, rather than sort of reaching out. So I just want confirmation that you are discussing business priorities, whether they're large scale or small scale, just so that we know that what decisions we take is not going to sort of stifle them, which is Martin's point, or stymie them, I should say.
Okay, yeah, we're, there's a whole series of ongoing interactions and so on, because I know that, I know we work very closely with the chamber, for example. And I know councillor Fox has actually been to a number of meetings and had discussions about it. Will also have a formal process as opposed to all the informal discussions about what's important and what we all want to do to support businesses in the sense of creating wealth and jobs within our community. So there is a, there's a whole series of ongoing links that councillor Fox has picked up and that previously councillor Iqbal was involved in, as well as specifics around the chamber and so on. And they will be part of the formal consultation process around the budget as well.
And does it cover all sectors?
It's not my area of expertise, I was just getting as a starter for 10.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I've got Diane looking to come in with her question, but Eugene?
Sorry, I was just going to add from an office point, just to supplement that. So obviously, the city growth team, not my area, but I work closely with them, do a lot of that kind of sectoral work across the city. And as well as the chamber, I think, we remember during Covid, we had the Business Recovery Group, a lot of work we've done with. And we did deliver a significant amount of business grants across the city. And I think one of us part of that, there was a kind of a lot of liaisons around that and there were difficulties with that, as there were in all other cities. But actually, in recent, that taught us a lot about what was going off in the city, including some things we didn't know as well. And that learnings in the City Growth Team, and I know they're building on that, and that will be part of the route going forward.
And just to add to that, picking up on councillor McDonald's point as well, businesses is always part of the budget consultation process and the engagement we do around it. But actually, what we tend to find, I mean, it wasn't Eugene last year, it was myself and director of finance, Ryan Keyworth, we held a meeting with a sort of mix of the Business Recovery Group and a wider partnership of business as well. Conversation was really good, not just thinking about like business rates and that sort of thing, it was actually talking about fundamental priorities for the city, how we work together to tackle poverty, how we deliver climate change, kind of our adaptation and things in the 10-point plan that you're seeing being developed now. So we have those quite strategic conversations with our business community as well. It's really important we do that. And it's brilliant to see that obviously our businesses are on that same page about how we tackle some of the more fundamental challenges in the city. And it's not just about what's in the budget, year in, year out, basically. So it's usually a really positive conversation, we sustain that through the year as well.
Thank you. And I'm kind of mindful that some of these elements are moving nicely into the next item from Nellin. So I'm going to bring Diane in here and then I've got a couple of things I want to say at the end of this one, but go on, Diane.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, Laurie, you've just touched on this because I thought to myself, is this the right arena for this question? But you've just touched on it. I know that over the years, we have tried to get some kind of acknowledgement from partner organisations, that people who are living in poverty, people who have health problems, people who are, need support as a family or as individuals, actually cost more if you don't do the prevention work. And they drain the resources. So we started talking about how you support businesses, we started talking about how you bring the economy back. But are we still going forward with the approach that we were trying to do a number of years ago to work with NHS and the health agencies, to do, to bring some money in to invest in preventative work as a means of spending to save, or them spending with us to save, and perhaps getting a hold of some of those extra, extra money so that going to the NHS in that way?
The answer to your question is yes. It's more complicated because they're reorganising as well. And, you know, my view is that when things are tough, it's the wrong time actually to be reorganising because far too many people are looking at the jobs and thinking about where they fit and all of this sort of stuff. But yes, those conversations are continuing, and particularly around children's services actually. I think, to be honest, I think some of the longer term discussion about public health and prevention has actually been adversely affected obviously by a pandemic. And that's something that hopefully we can, we can raise further up the agenda as well as we move forward. Because all of our public health staff and so on have really been stretched in terms of supporting the communities around Covid-related work and so on as well. So I would like to see that, you know, further up the, well, not further up, but return to where it fits in our list of priorities as well. Because you're absolutely right, we will continue to do that and work with other agencies.
Thank you, Kate. So finally, we've overrun on everything here, but I'm quite relaxed about that one, to be honest with you, because I'm quite happy to see this conversation go on and we're beginning to warm up. So for my point, reflecting on some of the things that were said, we got funding from central government during Covid, which was great, it wasn't enough, but it did help us. But it was, Eugene hinted at the fact that that funding ended too early. It would be really helpful in terms of us going forward and seeing the pressures we're under, as to understand what that shortfall from government was, when it ended too early, the pressures that that has heaped on us. And that way we can sort of divorce that one and separate that one from the ongoing pressures that we're facing with social care. So just doesn't necessarily need to come back as a formal briefing straight away at this stage, but if we could kind of get a kind of information for members of the committee to understand that element of that. Because it may be that we would want to go back to government to say, thanks for your support, but it was cut too early, too quickly, and we need some more. Or some other elements of that kind of recommendation.
Can I come back on that, please? I think there's an explanation, as in, for example, with adult social care, the policy during Covid was home first. So instead of people going into residential care, you know, the priority was to get people home for all sorts of reasons. I mean, it's a good policy anyhow, but it went into overdrive during Covid. And at that point, the NHS was picking up a lot of the costs for getting people out of hospital, that just stopped. People's needs don't stop. And so there's a, there are a lot of people who were getting quite high levels of support, which commenced during Covid, who are still needing that support. And likewise, the, we all know about the increases in domestic violence, mental health issues and so on as well, which have put a lot of pressure on children's services as well. So it's not sort of specific funding, it's actually about the funding was for Covid, but the impact of Covid on our, on our communities is still continuing. That's the issue I wanted to explain. Sorry, I hope that wasn't patronising, but you can see it in the budget as well.
No, that's great. And it kind of touched on the comments made by councillor Leary at full council yesterday. It does kind of put a bit more context in there as to why we got that and stuff. But thank you for that, thank you. I know Eugene's had to go on to another meeting and really appreciate that, Kate and Laurie. As a scene setter, it's really very much appreciated, thank you.
And if you've got subsequently, you know, I know we've had an introductory conversation and some of it might seem unsatisfactory, but if it's triggered further thoughts as you go through some of your other work, you know, you've got an opportunity to go back, come back through Emily to, yeah, to feed back to us. It's not your last opportunity. But thank you for your time and good luck with the rest of your agenda. I've got my own one as well to do next week, I think that one is, so thanks very much.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you. Yeah. Abdul, over to you.
Good morning, Chair. Sorry, Abdul, I'm cabinet advisor for City Futures, just here in place of councillor Julia Grok, who's otherwise occupied. So, yeah, city development, central area strategy. Can I introduce our director of city development, Nellin Sanever Anthony, to update us on the city centre development plan?
Thank you, councillor Abdul. Thank you, Chair. So just to explain again who I am and why I'm here, so I'm Nellin Sanever Anthony, Director of City Centre Development. In July, at the end of July, I was asked to lead on the delivery of the city centre plan, as mainly following my colleague leaving the council, Edward Highfield. So since the end of July, I've been working on this and trying to pull this together and link it with the central area strategy that some of you may have heard about that Deloitte's are working on. So if I just talk about the context of where we're at, talk through what we're planning to do, and then open it up to see how this committee would like to help shape that plan. So like a lot of cities and towns in the UK and beyond, Sheffield is experiencing its own fair share of structural and economic challenges. However, despite those challenges, from changing retail to reduce number of office workers, Sheffield still has a really rich set of opportunities to capitalise on and to reach its potential. Our outdoor city brand is known and respected outside the city as well as within the city. And this is a brand on which to build for the city centre, which will be even more compelling in a post-Covid climate, where footloose talent will be more likely to appreciate the amenities of a large city with easy access to nature. We have a really good framework to make the city centre a great destination. We've got high quality and well-maintained public realm, we've got great open spaces and green spaces, we've got characterful and distinct built environment, we've got strong cultural anchors, we've got a rich ecosystem of cultural, creative and digital businesses, and two world-class universities, a year-long calendar of events, a great transport system in our tram system that runs through the city centre, and new development in the pipeline with good opportunities coming forwards. However, we do need to address the following: a better balance of residential, office and retail uses in the city centre. A more diverse residential offer is important, housing options for all to populate the city centre is key. New workplaces and offices that are adaptive to flexible working. We need to accept the reduction in the importance of retail space with a better mix between national brands, homegrown brands, leisure and culture that makes the city centre the place for socialising and exchange of ideas rather than just shopping. We also need to think more about young people, from children to young adults, and what offers are meaningful in a digital age. And all of that, of course, in the context of net zero carbon and sustainability that we will need to address too. So the plan we are working on will seek to deal with how we improve and move forward the idea of the city centre being that place that is for all people of Sheffield and the region to meet, socialise, play, collaborate and work together. We will look at how the good work that's already going on in the city centre is made more visible, encourage the activation of public realm and all show that there's always something going on in the city centre. This should all lead to a better positioning nationally and internationally for Sheffield as a major UK city. So more people, more visibility, more prominence. The plan will seek to address short-term, medium-term and long-term issues. Many of the current short-term issues, or the immediate issues that have actually in some ways been longstanding issues that need dealing with, are all along a particular line through the city centre, a north-east, south-west axis that runs from Castle Gate through to Moorfoot. Issues the plan will seek to resolve along that line will be Castle Gate and the surrounding area, High Street, Fargate, the John Lewis Building, the Town Hall, Central Library, Graves Art Gallery, Pinstone Street, former Debenhams and finally Moorfoot. It should not be forgotten that in the middle of the short-term issues is the delivery of the Heart of the City project, which over the next 18 months or so will largely be complete, finally addressing a lack of critical mass that's been an issue for the city centre for decades. The plan will also cover workplace and other commercial uses. Importantly, the plan is about the medium to long-term issue to repopulate the city centre in terms of homes and associated amenities and workspace. To deliver up to 20,000 new homes, we can't just zone the city centre and hope things will happen. We need to create new city centre neighbourhoods, attractive, safe places that will create the demand for new homes in the centre. So working with Deloitte and linked to the local plan, the city centre plan, will begin to define how areas of the centre can be defined by a number of neighbourhoods. And along with the issues to resolve on Castle Gate and all the other sites mentioned down to Moorfoot, we will define some new housing sites that will act as catalysts for that medium to long-term housing-led regeneration. The sustainability of all activity along those key streets from Castle Gate to Moorfoot will then be supported by our resident population along with decent workspaces. Timescales, as promised in the one-year plan, subject to any required approvals to publish documents prior to public consultation, we're aiming to get documents out late November and early December for that engagement with the public so that we can complete the plan by the end of the year. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Nellin. So I'll open up to the floor, I've got Neil, Martin and Barbara. Neil?
Thank you, Chair. Nellin, you just said there's a reduced number of office workers, but we said we'd be building more office space and you mentioned again that part of the plan is to build new types of office space, so is there really a need for it?
I think what we're seeing is at the moment, we're suffering from a lack of office workers in the city centre because of the pandemic, including the city council workers. But we're also seeing demand for quality space, so even with the Heart of the City project, we are, we will be announcing fairly soon the next major letting of office space. So what office occupiers are looking for is quality, decent quality space, because they still see city centres as those places to collaborate with others and the fact that the city centre has that wider offer for the workforce. So lots of occupiers now are looking for not just being able to house people in remote workplaces that they've got to drive to and from, but it's also that ease of access, public transport and the wider offer that surrounds those spaces. In the middle of the pandemic, we saw CMS take the office space in Grosvenor House, the remaining office space. And as I said, shortly we'll be announcing another major letting. So we're still seeing demand, but at the moment, obviously, we've got the problem with the city centre is a lack of office users being in there.
You just mentioned public transport. Seems to be currently people can't access the city centre due to the lack of public transport, so do you think creating a more accessible city centre by public transport would be one of the aims that should be in the plan?
Improving access by public transport is key. It's also key to how cities, not just Sheffield but around the world, need to operate. And in terms of sustainability and the green agenda, it's absolutely critical.
So does that mean you support a return of public transport to Pinstone Street?
Whether buses... Whether buses are dropping off passengers on Pinstone Street or Rockingham Street, we've still got the same amount of buses coming through the city centre. Where you drop them off is a question for other people, thank you.
I thought you were responsible for the city centre planning. Anyway, are there discussions going on about the repurposing of certain buildings in the city centres, such as the John Lewis and the Debenhams buildings?
So the John Lewis Building, as I've previously made public, is that we are working on some options at the moment. Those options are going to be part of the engagement through the city centre plan. Rather than talk about the John Lewis Building in isolation and out of context with the rest of the city centre, the right thing to do is to include a number of options in the city centre plan and have that engagement on it then. The Debenhams Building, it's not in our control. We are talking to the people who own the lease of the Debenhams Building and we're talking to the long leaseholders, New River Retail, about that building, but as of yet, they are not ready to come forward with their own plans. But we are engaged with them and we hope that we'll have something to say about that when we come to finalise the city centre plan.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Neil. Thank you, Nellin, for diplomatically skirting your way around that one. Can I bring in Martin now?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, come as no surprise, I've got quite a lot of questions and comments on this one. So I've just initially restrict myself to a couple to give everybody else a chance to talk. Thanks for the presentation, Nellin. I just wanted to talk about the timetable, which does sound incredibly tight. You mentioned, if I heard it correctly, that the plans, or draft plans for both the city centre and the central area strategy would be available late November to go out to consultation for a decision by the end of the year? Two questions, two parts of that. What input will this committee have or could it have? And also, late November to the end of the year, is that enough time for genuine public consultation?
That's a lot of challenge, it's a massive challenge that I'm dealing with at the moment. So in terms of a desire to see the plan delivered by the end of the calendar year, we're up against it, in fact. On that timetable, we are planning to engage with the public over a three-week period from the middle of November for three weeks going into the first week of December. Now, that's why I said in the presentation, that timetable is actually subject to what approvals we might need in terms of the documentation being put into the public domain and equally what input various committees might want to have before it goes into the public domain. So that's the timetable I'm currently working to, but that may well, that may change, subject to what approvals are necessary and what input everybody wants.
Yes, I apologise for pointing out the obvious there, it is very challenging. The other point I just wanted to raise, and I'm not going to be as specific as Neil was, but I agree 110% with your comment that the city centre's for everyone in Sheffield and not just the people that live in the city centre or work in the city centre, it's for everybody. So just to clarify, so within your remit, without mentioning any particular streets, is there going to be a strategic plan for transport to and from and within the city centre? Because it just occurs to me that if we haven't got that strategic transport plan, then, you know, a key piece of the jigsaw won't be there.
Clearly the council has its own, there's a separate transport strategy. And part of that transport strategy, and I'm not responsible for the transport strategy, part of that transport strategy includes the Transforming Cities Fund and the Connecting Sheffield Strategy that is being worked through. And part of that Connecting Sheffield Strategy also deals with the Pinstone Street, Rockingham Street issue. So what the city plan will do is make reference to the importance of connectivity and accessibility and drawing the relevant elements of the Connecting Sheffield Plan and make reference to the wider transport strategy. But it won't deal with the transport strategy itself because that's a separate piece of work. But clearly, the accessibility of the city centre is important and so it will draw the connections on that in the plan.
Yeah, just some feedback on that, that's absolutely vital. Do you know who is working on that strategic transport plan for the city centre?
Yeah, the head of transport, Tom Finnigan-Smith and team are working on that plan.
Thank you, Martin. Barbara, then, Chris?
Yeah, thank you. It actually touches on public transport as well because there's a lot of concern about it, as you know. But my added concern is, what about all those people that you want living in the city centre who want to get out? And if they can't have cars in the city centre and there isn't a public transport system to get them out into the outdoor city with all its attractions and outdoor spaces, what incentive is there for them to live there? Might be great for a couple of years, but if they're stuck in the centre, they're not going to want to move out. And has ideas about that been factored into the plan? Residents out as opposed to people coming in?
So we're factoring various things into the plan, it's not been written yet. We are writing it as, and it's being written while I speak here, in order to try and get something ready for November. Those issues in terms of accessibility within and without the city need to be addressed. And in terms of encouraging more people to live in the city centre, the various sort of housing markets and demand from different demographic groups and what incentivises then to live in the city centre will be addressed in the plan.
Yeah, that suggests that you're expecting quite large movements of people depending on sort of their age and their personal circumstances. And I suppose the worry is sustainability of that, when you've got expect movement catering for it.
All I can say on that at this stage is that increased density of living in the city centre is one of the most sustainable ways of any city to operate. And around the world, cities are looking at how their cities can densify in terms of housing. It means in terms of day-to-day life, not a reliance on transportation, on motorised transportation in the main, and the opportunities to use public transport are increased. And that is, that's an issue that Sheffield needs to grapple with along with everyone else. And yes, the pandemic has caused disruption to the public transport system, but everywhere, everywhere on the planet is looking at this issue. And the most sustainable way of getting people in or out is public transport. And to minimise transport needs, having more people in the city centre is better than having sprawl across the city.
I agree with that, it's just as I say, allowing everyone to enjoy what's in the city centre and around it, wherever you live. Thank you.
Barbara, I'm feeling the need for briefing to come to us at some stage on Transforming Cities and Connecting Sheffield to help educate and inform us in our ways going forward. Chris and then Paul, Chris?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to follow on and add a few other issues. The reason people want to live in a city centre is because it's got that retail and leisure offer that's got to be of a certain quality. And given that a lot of the major traders, John Lewis, unfortunately, the Debenhams and the like, are all coming out of cities, a lot have come out of our city and going into internet sales. It's how we encourage smaller independent businesses to take their places and how we encourage that. Also, one of the things I've shouted about a long time on Plenipotent is the fact that we haven't got a outstanding, high-rise, multifunctional building in the city. A building that could be retail, office, residential and hotel development in one, you know, a mega standout building that people say, wow, look at that, they've got that in Sheffield, it's the highest in Europe, you know, it outstrips London, it outstrips Leeds. Something special that people can say that is an iconic building for Sheffield, I've said that for years. But also, coming down to more basic levels, income generation for the council, I said this at previous speakers, the markets are a perfect example of how we can generate small businesses to give them a footing to go out into the bigger retail world. And also to encourage sustainable businesses from markets as well and expand our range of markets. We had that flower market down on Castle Gate. I didn't see a report about how often that's going to be or, you know, probably spring and summer more than the autumn and winter. But I am aware that a number of other authorities are looking at extra markets like antiques markets and antique fairs on certain places. The refurbishment of the King Street, it's only a small little bit of market stalls, but it gets quite busy when it was being used and still does, even though the whole major market's moved down to Moor. I'd like to know how much footfall we've got back into that market, because I went in a month or so ago and it was fairly heaving, you know, and I was thinking, oh, this is great. And some of the traders said they have their good days and bad days as normal, but they're saying that the good days are becoming more than the bad days on the whole. So how we can increase markets to bring more trade and footfall into the city and that sustainability that will hold those residents in the city centre, bring others in. And I will say this, because Douglas is sat in front of me, he's one of them that doesn't have very good mobility. I've stuck my blue badge out on Pinstone Street in my car. I do have a pass to go on the bus. It's no good to me getting off, I can't walk from the bus stop physically to the Town Hall. If you drop me off outside the Town Hall, I'll be fine, but I can't get along Pinstone Street now. So as one of them, I would say we've seriously got to look at the way that public transport is used in the city. And I will say this, it doesn't necessarily have to be on the surface. We could look at sticking that tram system underground and doing a box and cut-and-box system, of putting the tram system underground. So we could have trams running on Pinstone Street, you wouldn't see them because they'd be underground, just a thought for the future. It's very expensive, but it's something that a 21st century city should be looking at. A metro system doesn't just have to be on the surface, it can be underground as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chris. Nellin, vibrancy, maybe not the underground tram system at the moment, but yeah.
I suppose I can only respond to councillor Rosling-Josephs in a general way to those views that you put forward. I think, first of all, in terms of independence and encouraging that, we're already doing that with what we're doing with Heart of the City. And you'll see more of it as those projects complete. So Leah's Yard, for example, is all about those independents. We are going to be measuring the success of what happens at Leah's Yard through a set of social impact measures. So the focus isn't just on trying to get big bucks in commercial deals, it's about encouraging the throughput of independents and allowing for their growth and sustainability. I think we'll see more of that at the Cambridge Street Collective as well when it opens up. The other thing that we've done as a council with those deals and including the Radisson Hotel that's coming, is we've insisted that the lowest wages are all real living wage, real living wage foundations, so creating good jobs and on decent pay. So those things we're already doing and then what would be great to see more of that come forward. Massive high-rise, I don't know. The viability of those things is very, very challenging. The plans that have been put forward in this city for massive high-rises haven't come forward. The most recent one was down at the old Primark site at Castle Gate. Effectively, they got planning consent and then put it on the market. So it's, you know, that then secures a valuable consent for them, the ability for those schemes to come forward is challenging. Income generation, I think I talked about in the presentation, the need to activate the public spaces. And that's something that, in terms of my input on this plan, as well as just sort of spatial aspects of saying what can be done where and how, the key aspect is how we generate that vibrancy and also write into this plan what we need to do in terms of activating those public spaces with markets and the like. Again, this council's already planning to do that with Fargate through the Future High Streets funding by putting in the infrastructure that will enable quality, quality markets, quality events on Fargate and really activate that space. And it's already doing it, as you said, Chris, from the examples down at Castle Gate from recent weekend. So we can see that we're already doing that kind of work and to really make the city a success, as I mentioned in the presentation, we need to do more. Public transport access, as I said, yeah, that is critical and accessibility in and out has got to be, it will be addressed by the plan, but mainly with reference to those other strategies that are going on. So they're joined up as opposed to being separate. And being able to put a tram underground, I think that's not a question for this city centre plan. It could be aspirations, but again, very, very, very expensive systems. And you need, ultimately, it might come, because what you do need is that densification of residential occupation and workspace occupation in order to make those systems work. of residential occupation and workspace occupation in order to make those systems work financially, viable.
Cheers. Chris, you want to come in? Martin, you indicated, was that on this point or is it on another point?
No, I said at the beginning, I've got lots of questions, and I just did two, and I've got a couple more.
Okay, I'll bring you in after Paul then. Chris?
Thank you, Chair. Just on the markets, I saw the Continental Market on a few months ago, which is Marketplace Europe's thing. The Christmas market is run by somebody completely different, and I was told that there would be a point where all the markets that we operate, the private markets, so to speak, the Continental and the Christmas markets, would be coming up for renegotiation or bidding, you know, open bidding or whatever, franchising. Is that happening or has that been put on hold? Because I'm just wondering. The Christmas market I didn't see last year, but it's not been as spectacular as the likes of Manchester or even Lincoln or if we could get it like Belfast or Glasgow's.
I don't know, is the answer, because I don't deal with it. It's Richard Ayer that you need to speak to on that, who deals with the markets and the operation of the city centre. Thanks.
Thank you, Nellin. Paul and then Martin.
Thanks very much, Chair. I can tell you, Chris, that the Pollen Market is on every month, the third Sunday of the month, and we've funded that with the Economic Recovery Fund, like lots of the events in the town centre, which I think is coming to a meeting. Sorry, it doesn't say what date it's coming, maybe in November. But if anybody wanted a briefing on the event in town that we've supported, send me an email and we'll arrange something. Yeah, I was going to say regarding public transport, like I'm really looking forward to having a modern public transport hub in the city centre that's really fit for purpose, and also is complemented by a modern free electric bus circular, and also with lots of pedestrianisation and big open spaces for more of those events that bring people into the town centre and help the resident local businesses. Speaking of which, the kind of the chain store model is in its death throes, and there's more and more net closures every year, and we see the empty units in town that are kind of too big and not much use to anyone. So I really hope that the plan takes that into account and creates smaller units or arcades that are usable for our small local businesses, and helps with the work we're doing that I referred to earlier about creating a more welcoming terrain for startups. I would say that it almost definitely will be too many offices in town. I think that in the plan needs to acknowledge that the city centre really should be, ought to be treated as a district of the city, rather than just a city centre where people go to shop and eat and drink and then go home. And particularly with the plans to move an extra 20,000 people into the city centre, or central area, I should say. And just as a comparison, so in my ward of Gleedless Valley, there's about 18,000 and 19,000 people, including children and adults. And what we have in the ward to service the lives of those people is we have five primary schools, we've got food shops, there's something like five or six GP surgeries, five or six pharmacies, we've got four parks and some woodlands, and I mean, that might actually come across as boasting, because it is one of the greenest wards despite being a little suburban ward. But they really, I would say, schools, doctors, pharmacies, places to buy food, to cook at home, I mean, they need to be going into this central area plan as a priority. Certainly, I would say more of a priority than building another, however many thousands of offices. Yeah. So that's it. Sorry, that wasn't really a clear question, more of an ask, wasn't it? Sorry, Nellin.
Yeah, go on, go on then. I'll try and respond. I think when I was going through the presentation, I talked about the fact that you can't just zone the city centre for more housing and hope it all happens. You've got to create neighbourhoods, you've got to create distinct places, you've got to create places that have got those amenities that you just talked about. And that's not the short-term fix, that's a medium to long-term fix for the city centre, which will be described in the plan. So it is about creating those neighbourhoods and those places where people want to live that's got, you know, as well as the, all those amenities you mentioned, but including the green space and the open space. And that's why the plan, when you see what will come out of it, it talks about certain areas of the city centre, breaks it down into certain distinct areas, and then we'll talk about the creation of those new neighbourhoods and what amenities and so on are going to be required in order to enable those residential schemes to come forward.
Thank you, Nellin. I've got Martin and Tim, but before I bring you guys in, and your points there, Paul, are well made. When, Nellin, when do you want the committee inputs? Obviously, you're getting some now, but there will be additional inputs to come from us. And this committee needs to kind of think, what does the central area strategy need to include? Paul, I mentioned that because you've obviously raised some of those elements there in your question. So the feedback timeline that we need to do to help inform and do this, because obviously you're going to consult in November, is when do you need information from us, when do we need to get stuff to you? Yep.
So I think to help with that, you really need a draft of plans, so that there's something that you can then refer to. I'm going to have to come back to you on when that draft will be available, and then we can see. Again, that's where the consultation programme, engagement programme with the public might just need to change depending on the inputs from various committees. So the key is to get that draft in a shape that can be shared.
Thank you, thank you, Nellin. Martin and Tim?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Two comments and a question. First comment is, thank you, Nellin. You've been leading the Heart of the City project, and now you've been asked to pick up the city centre plan and the central area strategy. So that's a heck of a big workload, and I'm sure everybody would want to just thank you for picking that up at short notice, it's much appreciated. The other comment is, I think we all agree that the lack of, I'll call it, a strategic transport plan for the city centre is a glaring gap in our current thinking and planning. And so that should definitely come back to this committee. The question I have is around how we actually measure economic activity in the city centre. The main measure we appear to be using at the moment is footfall. So don't get me wrong, the events that we put on in the city centre to bring people in adds vibrancy to the city centre. But I haven't yet seen any evidence that links that increase in vibrancy to economic activity. I'll give you one small example while I'm just a bit cautious about this. I have spoken to one city centre retailer, who I agreed not to name, and they're very central. And in their experience, their turnover, their takings on a day when there's an event very close to their store, their takings go down quite considerably. Because you bring people into an event, where are they going to spend their money? They're going to spend the money in the event. If there's a series of stores laid out, that might block people's view of an attractive window display. So vibrancy in the city centre, getting more people into the city centre tick, but do we have any evidence as to what that does to the economic activity in the city centre? And how is the council measuring that? Thank you.
So that's a really good point, and one that we need to address in the city centre plan, and look at the metrics that need to be put in place so that progress etc can be monitored going forwards. I'll give you a little example of what we're already doing, and that's with the Heart of the City project, where we estimated an additional £3 billion worth of economic activity through to 2030. And so far, from the dashboard and the metrics we keep on Heart of the City, we are £973 million into that, so delivering £973 million of gross domestic product, additional economic activity in the city. So, and in terms of job numbers, it's 4,400 so far out of 7,000. So on that project, we do look at those kind of metrics, look at the actual economic impact, rather than just footfall, we don't actually measure footfall. It's looking at jobs and it's looking at the economic activity from the space created, the activity that's going on in the space and the jobs. So that's a really good point and something that we need to look at how we measure that progress throughout from the plan.
Thank you. So we've got Tim, Diane and Paul, and then mindful we've still got another item to get on to. So, Tim?
Hiya. I'm not clear, how much, you talk about you said the central area strategy, and then you talk about the transport of that. How much are they, are you talking to each other? That's what I want to know, is what's the link between the two? Are you, because the two go together as far as I can see, in terms of how you're designing your central area strategy and how that's going to potentially work with whatever the outcomes are on any transport strategy that you're for the centre and getting round? Because one of the things I must say is, when I first moved up to Sheffield, I found incredibly difficult to work out when I arrived at a train station is then to, where to get the bus from, which needs to be quite some distance to get home and things like that. And I just wonder how much of that you were talking about, because, you know, welcome to talk about the electric bus here, and if that's likely to come to fruition. And I think that's probably just misspeaking that you said when you said pedestrianisation, that you were talking about shared spaces for walkers and cyclists that we're hopefully increasing. So I just wonder how that's all coming together.
So let me just go back on a few things. The plan is about addressing short, medium and long-term issues in the city centre. Short-term issues I mentioned, we've got key sites that need dealing with from Castle Gate down to Moorfoot and bits and pieces in between. We've then got the changes in the city centre and the need to look at, linked to the local plan and housing delivery, how many more homes we can actually deliver into the central area, into the city centre. So that is fundamentally what the plan is going to address, the medium, short, medium, long-term position on how the city centre gets used. Underpinning that, though, is absolutely critical, is how you get people in and out, how people access it. So in terms of drafting this plan at the moment, we are engaged, fully engaged with the transport team. And as I said, it's the current, the current transport strategy, published transport strategy of this council, along with the connecting Sheffield plans, that are key to make sure that the, those uses that I've just talked about, the short, medium, long-term uses, the transport plans actually do pick all that up. So we're totally engaged. In terms of how we are pulling this plan together, I am working with the former City Growth senior management team, which includes the head of transport, to make sure that this plan actually delivers what it needs to do for the city centre, including transport, transport's key. So we're working together on it.
Sorry, I was just, I was thinking about, the other thing is, when you've talked about independent shops and that sort of thing, and it's, it will be a measure of success, are you putting in any form of planning policy? Because I know that I worked closely with Liberal Democrats in Cambridge, with Mill Road into protecting independent shops and planning policy, because obviously, as an area becomes more popular, you're more likely to get the national chains want to come down there and force out, because as rents rise to force out independent traders. And that's something that we need to look forward if we are to make a success of independent traders, that we don't use them to create the success of an area and then just see them all forced out because rents necessarily rise, and then we end up with homogenous uni look-alike, almost quasi-high street of anywhere else, it could be anywhere in Britain. And are we factoring that in? Are we looking at putting a planning policy in place to protect some of our spaces where our independent shops would be?
That's a good point, which I'll take up with our planning colleagues in terms of how the plan shapes up. Thanks.
That's a really helpful insight. Mick, you wanted to come in there just briefly?
Yeah, I agree. I do think it is something we need to bring into our work schedule going forward, certainly at the very minimum of information given as we move on. I've got Diane and then Paul. Diane?
Thank you, Chair. Nellin, does the central area strategy cover areas such as Victoria Keys, which is something that was very vibrant and held a lot of promise some years ago, but could be said to be needing investment now, and also could be a possible opportunity? Because Chris has made a plea for underground trams, I'm making a plea for water transport and last mile schemes, which we could operate from Victoria Keys, or even going a little bit further afield to Old Walk in Rotherham, which has fantastic infrastructure. Over to you.
Thank you, councillor. So yes, Victoria Keys is covered within the area of the plan, in terms of central area. Effectively, just for you to think what it, where the kind of line is, it covers everything within the Ring Road, but it also goes across to pick up Park Hill area in the sort of the north-east quadrant, it goes into the north-west quadrant to pick up Callum Island and Eep's End, and also in the south-east, it kind of just dips across the Ring Road into the area around St Mary's Church as well. So it's that Ring Road plus those sort of three extensions to pick up the activity. So it does pick up Victoria Keys. And as part of the work to improve that whole Castle Gate area, that's part of what you'll see come forward in the plan. Water transport, yeah, no, I think it's a cracking idea. I think in terms of sustainability and getting goods in and out of the city centre again, it's something that is absolutely worth looking at.
Thank you. And from my own perspective, my own reflection is the Greater Green and the work that's going on down there has certainly opened up that canal basin area and made it a lot more accessible, and it's something that we should be rightly proud of here in Sheffield. Paul, you get to have the last say.
Well, you may not be, you may regret that. I was just going to say, on the, well, people are suggesting transport, no one's said monorail for a while, so I'm just putting it out there. And I've also thought that Fargate would lend itself to a log flue, but just thoughts. Now, I was actually wanting to come back in, Chair, just to answer a couple of councillor's missed points on the ERF, but I didn't know if it was the right time, because we will discuss it in more depth. But all I guess I was going to say is that when the events were being planned, we took a great deal of care not to tread on residents' toes, so... So the fact that things are, say, on the third weekend, because there was, there was some concerns from resident businesses that if they were on the, the last weekend of the month is always the best one, because that's when people get paid. So there were concerns to say, well, that's our best weekend anyway, so we don't want that there. So that's why events are on weekends other than that weekend. And because we've also, because we're funding them ourselves, we can also put whatever criteria in we want to. So we've, we've put in criteria whereby the events don't have businesses that are the same as the resident businesses, so they're complementary rather than competitive. And the same with supplying food and drinks. Say for example, on Division Street where there's lots of cafes and bars, you know, they were very keen not to have competing businesses drop in out of nowhere. And the anecdotal evidence is that it's been pretty good. I mean, I couldn't give you an exact quote now, but we do have comments from people, you know, when, when officers have been round and spoke to the shopkeepers and such after the event, just to ask them how it was. So I guess, I don't think we have any like exact financial details of how effective they were, but we have quite a lot of anecdotal evidence to show that they've worked. But again, if, if you did want a briefing or anything like that, then quite happy to arrange it. There's actually a seat on the ERF steering group for a Lib Dem that Mike Leverie chose not to take it, but it's still there. So I've got a lot of respect for you, Martin. I think you asked some good questions, and if you did, if you were interested in taking that seat, then you're welcome to. Cheers, Chair.
Thank you for that reflection, Martin.
Yeah, just, I'm not, just to be, to be absolutely clear, I'm not against the events. They have been successful, nothing else, it makes people feel good when they come to the city centre. My, you know, as a bit of a techie geek, there's that saying, what you measure is what you improve. And yeah, I completely bind to the fact that anecdotal evidence is it makes more vibrancy and so on. It's just that, you know, the objective, one of the key objectives is to improve economic activity in the city centre. And it's not a mega criticism, but so if that's an objective, how the heck are we actually measuring it? That was just the point I was trying to make.
As a nerd myself, I'm very sympathetic to that particular view there. Chris, did you, because we've got another item, do you want to come in briefly?
Just on, just on the monorail, there's a fantastic system in Wuppental in Germany.
You did have to open that one, didn't you?
Which is a suspended monorail that uses the line of the rivers that run through Wuppental. So they only leave the river when they come into a station. It's fantastic, it's been operating for well over 100 years. They even put an elephant on it to show how safe it was, but the elephant got upset and jumped out into the river. It survived, by the way.
I, I feel the ghost of councillor Mead on my shoulder right now, so I'm going to move on quickly from that one. And, okay, so Nellin, you've said you'll get us a draft strategy, and that will give members of this committee a chance to review that draft and make comments in a timely manner as best as possible. So we'll endeavour to do that. As always, thank you Abdul for coming along and supporting Nellin. And Nellin, it's always a pleasure, I always feel wiser having spoken to you. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you Chair.
Next item's over to Doug, have you got officers Mark and?
So. Thank you, thank you for your patience. Good morning. And we've, we've kept you sitting around for a wee while, so I'll shut up and let you get on with things. Tom, Mark and Victoria, it's always a delight to see you, so over to you guys. Doug, did you want to briefly introduce the item? Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, shall I, shall I introduce, yeah, what we've got here? Do you want me to introduce the team, or do you want the team to introduce themselves, what would be useful?
You can go for it, introduce them, yeah.
Yeah, okay, introduce yourselves please.
I'm Victoria Pembroke, I'm a Sustainability Programme Officer, Sheffield City Council.
Morning, Tom Finnigan-Smith, I'm the Head of Strategic Transport, Sustainability and Infrastructure.
Can everyone hear okay? So see, not putting the mic on, nice one. Okay. I'll get this right one day. So just to say, so the purpose of this is to have a fairly draft discussion about what we want to do for decarbonisation in Sheffield, with a view to bring it back to the next meeting of the committee, when we'll bring everything that's been said today into a draft written plan for a much firmer discussion. So I think that's planned. So there's about 10 slides today, which I'll just run through. And given the time that's gone on, I'll try and get through those fairly quickly. Then I guess we should probably go to open discussion. The officers are here to answer questions, the technical stuff as much as possible. But the best outcome is really to capture all the good ideas that are brooming around, around climate change. And I think it's something where, you know, all of us in the room are pretty well on the same page about the need for action on climate change. It is a priority, as a council, we have declared a climate emergency. There is lots of good stuff going off, and we need to capture that. So for a bit, if I just go through the slides now. So we've got, yeah, the next one there. So this is, now, can you see that? Okay. But very quickly, just a bit of a timeline. 2015 was the really important Paris Agreement of COP, the Conference of the Parties, setting out the, you know, the real targets and bringing it to public attention of the need to have definitive targets to reduce carbon emissions. In 2019, this council declared a climate emergency, we commissioned the Tyndale Report. The Pathways to Decarbonisation reports, which was commissioned from AROPS, was produced last year. And this year, we've aimed to distill this into the 10-point plan. But the point about the 10-point plan is, it's just a way of capturing the next stage at it. It was an agreement of the Cooperation Agreements, that we agreed in May, that we would do one by the autumn. So as always, we'll stretch the definition of the autumn a little bit. But, you know, it does fit, we're getting back to this committee in November. And of course, the big date on those, 2030, where we've had the target to be net zero by that date. So, see how that goes. So on the next slide, again, quite a bit of text on there, you may or may not be able to read it. But it's a question of what needs to change here, and there's, there's some seven lines on this. So it's about focusing on the council as an organisation. So, you know, there's some lines here about improving the energy efficiency of our estate in a radical way, improving the energy efficiency of our fleet services, increasing renewable energy generation, which of course was the topic of discussion at yesterday's council meeting, and then acting as an employer to enable our employees to reduce their emissions on a personal level. A section on our homes, obviously, council's a large landlord, improving the energy efficiency and building new homes that fit for climate change and the needs of people to live in them. Travel, the way we travel, reducing the number of cars and vehicle journeys, increasing active travel, electrifying vehicles, moving away from internal combustion engines. Or energy storage and energy generation, energy storage, so generating from renewables, as discussed yesterday, it's really important. There's also the issue of storage and or smoothing out the supplies of energy. Big challenge, also big opportunity for the city. The economy, economy for the future, it's not just about reducing emissions of businesses, but it's about improving skills for, so we're looking at the net zero carbon economy, we're also a circular economy. So an important way of addressing climate change and seizing the opportunities. And it's important to recognise that climate change, the climate emergency is also an opportunity as well as a massive threat to our existence. Issue on land, land usage, which I'll maybe come back to. And then consumption, what we eat, buy and throw away. So there's lots of opportunities to reduce consumption, reduce waste. And we haven't mentioned that food, but food strategy is going to be an important part of that too. So that's just about things that need to change in a radical way. On the next slide, just an outline approach to the plan. So we talked about the challenge we face, probably don't need to do the introduction to climate change. In some way, you know, all the discussion and debates have moved on a long way. The impact of climate change in Sheffield, we looked at the Tyndale Report and the AROPS reports there. And the impact of our city on climate, that's about how we contribute to the climate crisis and what we can do about it. There's the mention of what needs to change, which you just did talk about. And then there's barriers, which is, yeah, we're going to be discussing. And then benefits and opportunities. And as I just said, you know, climate change does give us lots of opportunities. And certainly with a city that's got a lot of really good, you know, technical expertise in the manufacturing sector, and also a lot of interest in, you know, greening the economy and climate change right across the board, you know, we can actually build on that. As a city, we could take the lead and be a long, long way further forward than most other local authorities in the country if we grab that opportunity. So that leads on to the next thing about the 10-point plan. The next slide there just lists some principles really. So in short, you know, whatever we do must be fair, it must have an impact, it must be innovative, or as innovative as possible. Not everything needs to be innovative, but, you know, we should keep our eyes open to that. It should be based on evidence rather than, you know, gut feeling. Though it's fair to say that we shouldn't get so bogged down with evidence seeing everything that we just don't do anything. It's got to be collaborative, it needs to bring in everyone in the city. And nature focus means we're reflecting the, the fact that we've also declared a nature emergency. And the nature emergency and the climate dimension go hand in hand, they're very much linked. And generally speaking, what you do to benefit one will also help the other situation. So on the next slide, we finally get to the 10 draft points that we've got in the current plan. So these aren't fixed, they can be amended. But in reality, it's just a way of categorising all the things that we need to do into 10 boxes. And it's 10 for convenience, it's because I've got 10 fingers on my hands, 10's a number that we want to go for. But it does help to give some pointers as to the sort of different approaches there. So I'll just go through those briefly. One is we'll put climate at the centre of our decision-making. So that reflects the fact that on every decision the council takes, there'll be potentially a climate-related impact, you know, working on that. And so things like the forthcoming climate impact assessment tools would be really good to, really important to embed, embed those into our decision-making and governance systems. Number two is we'll be proactive in finding ways to resource the actions needed. And in very simple terms, that means we actively applying for as much as possible of the government grants that are on offer. It's actually a really good way, there's potential there to bring central government money into the city. And we haven't always done that so well in the past, so that's, that's good. Number three is we'll take action to reduce carbon now. And the emphasis there is on doing what if we can sooner? Because the more we leave it, the more, the bigger the problem becomes and simply the less likely we are to be able to meet the targets that we all want to aim for. Number four is work towards reducing council emissions to the net zero by 2030. That's been said enough before. Number five is we work to bring the city together to make the changes we need. So pointing out it's not just a council thing. There's businesses and residents and community groups across the city all need to be part of that. So there's, there's ways of bringing them together. Number six is work the city to develop delivery plans for the areas where change needs to happen. So in other words, that means that I haven't got all the answers ready now and won't when this 10-point plan is signed off. But underpinning those, there's going to be a lot more action-focused plans on actually delivering the things that we set out to do. Number seven is we'll support people, businesses and organisations to take the action that's needed. So again, this is levering in help from other people. People always want to do their bit for the climate. Sometimes need help to be enabled to do so and to find out how they can do so. No one can do things in isolation. Number eight is we'll invest in skills in economy we need for the future. And I touched on the possibilities, the opportunities for actually creating new careers. We're already finding there's a actually massive skills shortage in the work that needs to be done here. And that's partly because there is more funding going to it. So what were once niche jobs must become mainstream. You know, and you think about whether it's people who can deal with, you know, flood and water engineering, to installing insulation on a big scale, to the people who can stall air source heat pumps, you know, there aren't enough of those people or enough people with those skills yet, so we need to do that. Number nine is we'll work to ensure we have the planning and infrastructure we need for the future. It's going to be a strong overlap with the local plan, but also it does go wider than that. And number 10 is we'll prepare the city to adapt for a changing climate. And that's about looking forward to the future, thinking about what we need to do. You see it most obviously with flood defences now, that's a, you know, a concrete example, literally in some ways. It's not all concrete, but it's about the fact that, you know, even if we're really successful in reducing emissions, you know, the climate is changing, is going to go on changing for years, we are going to be more and more affected. We can anticipate there'll be more and more severe floods and other things, heat waves, you know, cold swells, et cetera. We need to prepare for that, that could have massive impacts on our health services and right across the board. And the theme in there with LinkedIn is a bit about resilience. It's about how we adapt, how we protect our entire populations when that happens. So that's the 10 points, and we should maybe leave those up on the screen when we're discussing in a moment. Just the next slide though is just timescales. So it shows that we're here today, 10th of November is the next meeting of this committee, so provided the committee wants it, then we can come back with a more detailed plan. The plan is for it to go to the executive on the 15th of December, and then 2022, so after that really, the delivery plans will be developed. And final slide, yeah, just outlining questions for consideration there. Are the principles right, are the priorities right, and what specifics should be included? And I think that's where everyone can help a bit. And then a question for the committee, how does the committee want to be involved in the development of the plan and subsequent work? So looking at, getting the plan written up, but what's going to be the role in, you know, the committee being involved with it into the future? So that, those are the slides there. Probably suggest we go into questions and comments and record whatever people want to say. Is that okay with you, Chair?
Thank you Doug, thank you for that presentation. I've got Chris indicating, so I'll just pick up some things to start the ball rolling. And slide three, I think it was. One of the things for me on there that is, it's implicit in there, but it's not given in there. I didn't see people. I saw nature, I saw other things, but I didn't see people. Maybe it's implicit in the fair bit, but for me, the climate emergency's about everything, everybody. So I'd like to see something put in there. I picked up from the tone, the element of pragmatism over dogmatism. That's really, really welcome. We must embrace all opportunities that we've got. We must embrace all opportunities that we've got to go forward, if we are to go forward at all. And land usage, part of the pragmatism is, we definitely mentioned trees, trees are an important element of this, but not the only element, meadows, bogs, those are elements that are very much part of our estate and have been previously looked at, they need to be in there. Those are my objectives, my perspectives, I'll open up to everyone else now, and I'll bring Chris in, and I'll take other contributions from the floor, please. Could, Tim, yeah, was that you indicating? Yeah, cheers, Chris.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for that presentation, Douglas. Mark actually just mentioned a few things I was going to, but I was first on planning 26 years ago, and during that process, I asked the question when we were getting applications for new builds, why we weren't looking at things like solar panels on new builds? When we went through the process of the DC Home Standards, and I can't remember when that started, and I said, when we're refurbishing, why aren't we looking at not just double glazing and new boilers, solar panels on every council house? Just, just an easy thing, and every time we get, oh, it's too expensive, there's no subsidy for it, and when there was a subsidy, it was taken away. But I believe that that would have reduced the carbon emissions in this city dramatically. So have we, and I've got to say, it's not, not just one government, it's all governments haven't really supported that particular element of planning or in relation to the DC Home Standards for council houses. The other, the other bit Mark mentioned was about, we own lots of land that we should be looking at for planting of wildflowers, looking at whether they can be used for water retention to reduce flooding. You mentioned, I was in Hebbden Bridge not so long back, where they're recovering from their floods, and they've had lots of work done on the moorlands to retain water, but it's also had the effect of carbon capture as well. So it was something that we need to be looking at on some of the land that we've got. As for electric vehicles, can I have a Jaguar? I'd love one, four wheel drive Jaguar, electric, quite happy with that. Or a Bentley.
Aim high, why don't you, Chris? Doug?
Can I just say, and actually, I think that what both think, both of you have said is, is all good stuff, and that is the sort of thing we should be capturing. And I mean, I think the real challenge is that we are building council houses now, and the current plans don't have solar panels to go on them. That is an example of the sort of thing that we need to face up to as a council and say, well, you know, are we serious about this? Are we going to do it? Because actually, the relative cost of adding solar panels to a new built house is, you know, only modest increase, and we need to say, well, if this is a priority, then this is what we need to be doing. You know, similarly, I mean, something came up at the executive the other day, plans to install new gas fire, a new gas fire boiler in a school. You know, apparently, you know, an air source heat pump or a ground source heat pump was looked at, but just wasn't pursued, that the gas boiler is fairly conventional. And this, this is the challenge, and this is where it gets a little bit more difficult because it does get expensive, yeah, that's right, and but, you know, all building is expensive, and we've got to be able to factor those things in there. On the, on the land use, I mean, the price doesn't come in slide so far, but I mean, a lot of thinking is about what we can do with land use. There's an issue about the whole strategy about land use at the moment, that has yet to grapple with this issue, big issues around flood management on the moors. And then the Hebbden Bridge example that Chris mentioned is a sort of Yorkshire exemplar of what can be done to safeguard, basically safeguard, yeah, the towns and cities by holding huge amounts of water potentially upstream, so they don't come rush through the town and flood the places, which is what we've had in Sheffield before. I don't know if any of you, Mark, Tom or Victoria, want to add anything to that, rather than just me talk all the time?
Thank you, councillor Johnson, just picking up the Chair's point, councillor Jones, about people and where that, where that's featured in, in the, in the plan. I think one of the things I've just, I guess, sort of in terms of explaining that particular slide, slide three, what, what was trying to be summarised on that slide was the areas that we have that direct responsibility for within, within the council. But obviously, within the wider principles, particularly the point around collaboration, a big part of, in fact, a major part of this, as you've highlighted, is going to be about actually how we engage and how we work with, with people across the city, both in terms of our communities, but also how we work with other organisations and how we work with businesses. So I think we'll, we'll take that point back and we'll just make sure that that's really clear within the, within the plan, and make sure that that's emphasised, that that's got to be a clear part of actually how we achieve success, because as we know from work did on decarbonisation pathways, some of that sits with the council, but actually a lot of this is actually how we engage and actually enable others in the city to take action to achieve our 2030 ambition. The, the other point was just on, just responding to councillor Rosalind Joseph's comments about some of the work on the housing programme, and just to say that we're having conversations with housing colleagues who are looking at developing pilots around, looking at alternative technologies, as you've outlined, things like heat pumps and solar PV, and some of that will come out in the next version of the plan when we bring that in November with a bit more detail around some of that work. But again, I think quite clearly one of the things that we're emphasising is that, that there is need to accelerate that and to do a lot more work across our own housing, but also across the city. And that's where that next stage in terms of those detailed delivery plans starts to play through, once we've actually got the plan adopted.
Thank you, Mark. Tom?
Thank you, just, just to add as well, the, the, one of the other principles around fairness, obviously comes into the people aspect as well, which, you know, will come through within, within the developing plan. In terms of land use, again, there will be those specific points around what we are doing now and the committed work that we've gone on in terms of natural flood management that link into the land use issues you mentioned, and, you know, the demonstrator projects that we're delivering in the Lim Valley, and the peatland restoration work as well that we're, we're working on in partnership with other stakeholders. So, yet we can't promise a Jaguar, councillor Rosalind Joseph, but, you know, in terms of the, the kind of, again, the electrification of, of the city's fleet is a, is a major issue, the, the way in which people choose to travel is a significant issue. The transport is the largest contributor in the city to carbon emissions, and, you know, there has been little change in terms of that position over some time. So there is a significant amount that does need to be done, and the plan will set out those programmes that we, we are committed to delivering, but also some of those wider opportunities and the need for, for bigger change across the city.
Thank you, Tom. I'd settle for the Sinclair C5 right now, but rather than the Jaguar. There was something I was thinking about in terms, in terms of investments and other things, with the flood resilience, are we looking to identify lands that we may want to purchase going forward in terms of putting in natural flood measures and building flood planes? And where are we getting in terms of park usage and other realms that we've had for water capture and retention going forward? Has that been able to be progressed at any stage so far?
Yes, thank you. So in terms of the use of land for flood water, water retention, you know, the, the, there are a range of issues that we're considering. So upland storage is, is part of that. Within the schemes that we are progressing within our flood and water programme, and there are a number of different corridors where flood, flood storage will be a required aspect of those schemes to provide the protection to the city that's needed. So that, that programme is developing, the ten point plan will make reference to the flood and water programme, but the, the specific details of those will come forward within each of the schemes, and clearly there'll be significant engagement around what those specific proposals are. It might not be around kind of purchasing land, it might be working with landowners, but, but yes, flood storage is, is part of, of that plan.
Doug, did you want to add anything there before I bring Tim in? All right, cheers, thank you. So I've got so far, Tim, Martin Barber, Diana Neal on the list, so I'll bring in Tim now.
A couple of things on this slide, I agree about the people thing, but what we need to be put in, because there is some, some wording here which we'd do with a bit of improving, because I would say on the council, on the very last line where it says to enable our employees, should be to reduce and offset their emissions, should be one point, and then on the active travel and, and then I would say eliminating greenhouse gas emissions from the vehicles we use, because that means that we're not putting all our eggs into one basket on one technology that, you know, is there at the moment, because there are hydrogen vehicles, we talk about our buses, that are probably going to be, you know, at cer- a certain level, maybe hydrogen vehicles for some of the, some of the journeys around town, and then by, but the way we travel, we have to have language that encompasses the technologies that are going to likely to be the best technologies that we have, and we narrowed it right down by just talking about electrifying our vehicles on that. So that needs, as I say, that just definitely needs to change. And in how we use our land, yeah, pond restoration is something, because I know the council has direct input into quite, you know, a lot of pond restoration, which is one of the most biodiverse parts of, of the land and wildlife that we control, shall I say. And when, so then the next, next stage I'd say is when we talk about our priorities come, actually talk about ten point plan, I think it's more of a mission statement than a, than a plan actually at the moment that we've got there, and I'd prefer it as called as such, because then that will input into the plan that we have for action for planning.
Thank you, Tim. Doug?
I mean, just like, you know, I think that's a good point, yeah, there's no specific mention on this slide about hydrogen vehicles, but it's obviously, you know, the potential for that is, and I'm sure it's in, you know, what officers have been working on, but yeah, it's a really good thing, it's something that's possibly been overlooked in, in recent years, but, you know, there's, there are definite options there. And I just wanted to reflect on the, the good points about sort of ponds, as opposed to just large areas of moorland, you know, the thing about land use is you can be looking at both, you know, very small pockets of land and also, you know, the large areas, we have large areas in the city's ownership out in the peaks, but, yeah, actually the small ones, and the other day I was looking at, you know, a pond scheme up on Arbuthon, and actually it's really good, you know, so adjacent to a new set of housing there, and, you know, it can generate all sorts of amenities and really ties into the biodiversity agenda too.
Thank you. Martin?
Thank you, Chair. One point for clarification and then a couple of observations about the plan. First bit, it says at the bottom of that slide, the council needs to change what we eat, and then it then talks about reducing consumption. Good, and, and I know this might sound a bit flippant, but does that mean the council, in your view, has a role to tell people how much and what they eat?
So I mean, yeah, the council already purchases some food, you know, it's, it's really about influencing people and enabling people. You think of anything like the school meals contract, you know, that's, you know, a large purchasing thing. But it's, yeah, there's quite an element there about not, not what you eat, but where it comes from, you know, so it ties in to things like, you know, local food production, food miles, but also, you know, enabling and encouraging people to, you know, grow their own food where they can. All those things, you know, it's not replace, you know, supermarkets, but it can all support, you know, a move towards, you know, more local, more natural food. That in turn leads to better nutrition, better physical activity, you know, better health all round. So, yeah, that is very much the sort of, the, the people aspect that Mark mentioned before, you know, it is about encouraging. So it's on all levels really, so, yeah, you look at what the council directly buys in the way of food and drink, you know, how it's disposed of, what's the communications to other people, how it influences the other big organisations, city and businesses, but just, you know, what information, encouragement and support we provide to the public. So, you know, partly a commons thing and partly a sort of practical education issue.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, but please take it in the spirit with which this is meant. I think that's poorly worded and, and needs to change, because some people will say, what the hell has that got to do with the council, what I eat and how much I eat? So, yeah, I strongly recommend that's changed. So I, I, you know, I completely buy into the fact that we need a plan to tackle climate change within Sheffield, completely buy into that. I, with respect, I think there are two serious emissions in, in the list that was put up. One that's already been addressed is, one of the priorities must surely be the communication plan that goes with this, because if we don't get that right, and I think we all know that most people now will probably accept the need to tackle the climate change, not everybody does, and if we don't bring people with us, it will fail. And to use a phrase that councillor Turpin said earlier on, we don't want to rain down dick tats on people. And if we're not careful, to some parts of the city, this might look like that. So for me, one of those ten points has to be around communication in all its forms and how we engage with people. The other bit that I think is really critical, as I know, we've discussed that, so that's effectively a comment from you, the, the bit I, I want to ask about is something I think is also critically important, which is, what's the plan to ensure that we don't disproportionately, you know, in our plans to tackle climate change? What's, how do we ensure that we don't disproportionately disadvantage particular sectors of the community? So, you know, what if somebody can't afford to go green? Or, and I'm sorry to bring you back to transport, active transport, good, I've got a bike, but one day I won't be able to use it. And as Douglas knows, we've had a number of difficult questions at council, and those people are tending to come from a certain part of our community, of an age and a, a physical ability. And if we don't have a plan to ensure or monitor that we're, it, it's a whole thing about equality, and, you know, we've got to make sure we don't disadvantage key parts of our community, because again, if either consciously or unconsciously we end up doing that, then the whole plan's going to fail. So could somebody tell me, please, what the plan is to make sure that we don't disadvantage in this certain sectors of our community? Thank you.
I mean, I, I don't think the officers want to come in on anything, but I mean, I was just, on the equalities point, I mean, it is actually a really important point, you know, we often say that climate justice is social justice. It's actually that, you know, the people who are poorest, who often miss out the most and lose the most because of impacts of, of climate change. Yeah, the classic point there is on, on warm homes, for instance, you know, we, for, in terms of social justice, we can't afford to not do this, because, you know, keeping people in cold homes by, you know, inadequate insulation is, you know, it's just not right really. So, so that is a really important thing. And on transport too, I mean, you know, it is about, you know, enabling, you know, the whole population to be more mobile, you know, active travel is actually, you know, walking cycling is a really good step to keep you more healthy, and, and, you know, that all links with, with poverty. But also, just on, when you look at consumption, you know, the big issue there is that actually it is the wealthier bits of the population that actually emit that actually emit, you know, by far more carbon consumption than the poorer areas. You know, it's actually not the poorer areas that are the, the problem when it comes to carbon emissions, you know, they're just not, not consuming as much. So, and that is a really important thing. We, we do have, you know, as we all know, we're quite a divided city in equalities and wealth. So that's something to think about there. And I don't, the officer wants to come in with something that's more directly answering the, the points you raised there.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Just responding to councillor Stone's point on communication, I think just to, that, that clearly that is a major, a, a major concern, a major issue. Something that we do need to get right in terms of how we, how that message lands with different communities and with, with different groups across the city. And it is a, a central part of the plan. So within, within the ten point plan itself, one of those sections which is around taking people with us is fundamentally about that in terms of how we engage, how we develop communications and those campaigns and actually the messages that we put out. But also how we work through our other, other networks, so how we work with our local area committees and also how we work with other groups in the city. So again, that's going to be sort of fairly, fairly central to that. But of course what we'll do is we'll just, we'll go back and make sure that the work that we're bringing back in November, make sure that's really clear in terms of how we will be engaging and how we'll be communicating this message. Because I know some of you attended the carbon literacy training probably about sort of six, six, seven months ago now. And we did a revised version of that recently, last week with senior leadership team. So with, with Kate Josephs and, and the other exec directors and a number of other directors around the organisation. A big part of that was actually about how we communicate and the real sort of issues around making sure that we get the messages out in the right way and actually are able to engage with people effectively. And as you say, we don't actually turn people off or in some cases sort of switch people off to some of these issues here or actually get the wrong results. So that's something which I think, again, working with our colleagues within the communication service, we're looking to make sure that we get that right. But it's certainly something, just to reassure you, that's in our thinking and we'll make sure that that's, that's something that you can see when we bring the plan back in November. The other point was just on, about the, the sort of the point around making sure that this is a, a sort of a, a just transition and we're not disadvantaging anyone in, in this, in this process. And again, that's something which I think is hopefully, as Tom outlined or pointed out, that that's one of the fundamental points around fairness and making sure that we are helping with a just transition, that we're making sure that as part of the plan and part of the way of working around with our partners, but also across the council, that we're making sure that the sorts of issues where potentially people could be left behind, that those issues don't arise here in Sheffield. And there are clearly things that, that we're, that we're aware of around, whether that's to do with transport, whether it's to do with cycling, electric vehicles, whether it's to do with a number of different issues. We need to make sure, as you've highlighted, that people aren't disadvantaged by some of the changes that are happening. And that applies also to the work around economy and skills, making sure that there aren't particular sectors that might be left behind on this as well. So those, those are all areas which I hope are reflected in the plan that we've been back in, in, in November. Because of course that's again a really central part to making sure that this, this works.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. That, that's reassuring. Just, just to pick up on one thing, you used the word hopefully several times there. It, I mean, I, I buy in completely the need to, to, to progress the plan. But, you know, the council has a legal obligation to make sure that things it introduces don't impact. And I'm thinking particularly of the elderly and people with whose physical mobility isn't what it was. They might also be in the low income sector, but that's an important part of our society. Who, you know, touching on the communication thing, possibly feel a bit left out in terms of their views. And we've got to make sure, and we have a legal obligation to ensure that the changes we want to bring in don't disadvantage them in terms of their mobility either. So I, I think I've made my point, Chair, but I, I'd be very keen to see in detail how the council has considered that. And as I said before, for me, that needs to be one of the ten, but that's just a personal view. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Do you want to come back on that one?
Just briefly, if I may, Chair. I think we, we're in full agreement and, and I, I think there's, there's, there's almost those two aspects, just to, to sharpen that in terms of the, the strategy, policies, delivery plans, specific actions and projects that we deliver. We absolutely need to understand the equality implications of, of those. So in terms of the, the kind of duty on us to, to kind of understand that fully, making sure that we are undertaking quality impact assessments at those stages. But it, it's, it's more than just understanding that some of the things we're not, that we are doing don't have an adverse impact on, on certainly sectors with, with people with protected characteristics or, or vulnerabilities. It, it's about kind of how those strategies, plans, policies, actions, delivery kind of methods can potentially also positively influence some of the existing inequalities, inequalities. So it, it, it's looking at both sides of, of this. And that's, that's the, certainly the intention through developing the, the ten point plan in, in very much a, a similar way that you'd expect from, from any, you know, significant strategy or plan that the, the council kind of develops. So, you know, when the, the further detailed plan is, is presented and discussed in, in greater detail, hopefully some of those issues will become clearer than, than the, the more summary position we're presenting today.
Yes, just briefly, I wanted to talk a little bit more about communication because, sorry. Because obviously communication can go both ways very much. And particularly when we're developing the delivery plans and developing interventions, it's going to be really important that we're talking to people where they, where they are. Not all interventions will work in all parts of the city. So we need to make sure these, the local area committees and other ways of actually working with people to develop interventions that work for people in Sheffield, kind of where they are, rather than trying to develop a kind of a one size fits all approach, if that makes sense.
Thank you. It's very reassuring. And I'm assuming therefore that there's a consultation process associated with the adoption of the plan.
Most of the details of the consultation and engagement will be when it comes to actually developing delivery plans and developing particular interventions, rather than this, we, this, the plan does take into account the communications we have from people at the climate summit earlier in the year. But so the majority of this will be in the delivery plan stage.
Okay, so just for clarity then, we're not proposing consultation? We're not planning to consult the public before the adoption of the climate change plan for the city?
Not, not on this, Martin, no. So there, there's not a plan to consult on this ten point plan as such. But, you know, when it comes to all the deliveries, then they will need to go through, you know, as much consultation as, as is needed. You know, and full, you know, impact of, you know, checking out impacts of who's going to be affected and how. I mean, this is really, this is really a strategy, isn't it? So, you know, that's, that's the direction we're going in.
I apologise if I'm hogging time here, but in the same ways we, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just trying to think how, how. If, if I compare it, say, to the central area strategy that we were talking about before, the draft local plan or something. Before, there's, there are major strategic decisions for the council coming. It's usual that there is some kind of consultation process. So just, I cannot disagree with you, but just why aren't we doing it this time?
Oh, I mean, Mark will come in in a moment. I mean, I think they are different in nature. So central area strategy we were talking about earlier on will be specific plans around, you know, what's proposed to go where in city centre. Whereas this is much more, we won't say generic, much more strategic in terms of, you know, the principles to be followed and plans about what we're going to do. And, Mark?
Thank you. Yeah, just to outline some of the thinking behind that. So the, the work that's led into this that councillor Johnson outlined at the start was the, the work we did with the, the Tyndale Centre was a starting point. But then following on from that, which was originally commissioned through the Green City Partnership Board. And then following on from that, which obviously had members from different stakeholders around the city, including the universities and the Chamber of Commerce and Sheffield Climate Alliance and, and others. But I think the other thing is that there was the piece of work, which was the decarbonisation pathways reports, which were done over 2020 predominantly. And that piece of work, or the series of reports that were developed by Arup and Ricardo, that sort of set the evidence base and outlined the routes that we'd need to follow, which is again sort of the basis of the, the work here. Obit that obviously it's gone through some further refinement and filters and conversations within, within the authority and with, with partners. That, that effectively formed the evidence base and that was undertaken as well with a series of events that were held with stakeholders. And then I guess the other thing would, just to emphasise as well, was the conversations that we had as part of the climate summit, which was back in, back in March. So there was a climate summit which was back in March where I think we had something in the region of 200, 200. That particular event was held on, held on Zoom, but, and we did receive quite a few comments and had some sessions on there, some discussions, again, to try and establish some of the fundamental principles. And I think, I guess the other thing is that some of the work which we've done and we've had in terms of petitions and that has fed into this over the last eighteen months, two years, again, has emphasised the need for us to move at pace on this and to translate this into, into a plan. So I think the thinking behind that has sort of indicated that there's been quite a lot of engagement and consultation. And that, as councillor Johnson's pointed out, the next stage in terms of developing those detailed plans, whether they're about what we do on transport or whether that's what we do on how we look at generating more renewable energy in the city, which I know was a discussion yesterday, and those sorts of areas will require much more engagement. And that will be where that, that further detailed consultation will, will arise around actually what those plans start to, start to look like.
Thank you.
My views on, on that are pretty clear.
Yeah, I'm kind of, yeah, I've, I've let this meeting slip on massively already, so I'll, I'll kind of move on for now. I'll bring in Barbara, Diane and then Neil.
Thank you. Because we're on messaging, the first thing is sort of, when you say on the slide, the way we travel, you just, I mean, if you say reducing the number of cars and vehicles, you're, you're telling people that you're going to stop them using their car, all right? And force, because it follows on, forcing them on to active travel. Now, why can't you just change the messaging to finding ways of reducing our reliance on cars? Because if we're reducing reliance, it implies that there's something other that you can utilise instead, which is public transport, because it's not mentioned on here. So the second thing is you're just talking about reducing the number of car and vehicle journeys. I mean, a lot of the journeys done certainly in my area are all these home deliveries. Now, in the city centre, it's possible to have cargo bikes in the sort of local areas within the very close vicinity of some of the shopping centres, as long as the hills aren't too steep or too, the roads too narrow. You know, sort of you can envisage using cargo bikes, but that's not, that's not clear here. So again, reducing reliance on cars actually encapsulates quite a bit more. A lot of people think that if they then convert, you know, swap their car for an electric car, they've done their bit for the environment. So you're not reducing the actual usage of cars because they've still got it, but, you know, virtue signaling, sort of, I'm doing my bit. And we know full well that sort of electric vehicles are not pollution free at all for all sorts of reasons. And they're not the only option either. So I think I would like that certainly to be modified in a way to reflect sort of, I mean, certainly, I mean, this, this is my point of view, if you like. Reducing reliance on vehicles is, to me, encapsulates quite a few things. Later, you're talking about our homes and that as well. There's nothing in there that I can see about green walls, green roofs. Not only do they insulate, not only do they sort of look attractive, but they also sort of soak up pollutants as well, especially if you use the right thing. You can have them sort of, you can have them incorporated into, into the late walk, it's right, it's been too long, into installations that you can buy, like seating areas, like for the station, you can have these sort of big, big sort of walls that sort of you can move around. Or you could actually incorporate them into the planning sort of process. And I'd love to see more of this sort of thing sort of appearing in planning guidelines, you know. Right, I mean, again, it's always unintended consequences, but again, that was my concerns about the move to electric vehicles, simply because I know about recycling, reusage and all the rest of it with batteries. And there's a whole, I'm not going to spend time spent talking about those. Now, in Sheffield especially, when it comes to flood resilience, we've got loads of springs for all sorts of reasons. Just think of the names of some of the roads, you know. Now, have one single developed, you know, house built in one area that's, that you can completely divert string, springs causing flooding, localised flooding, quite serious repercussions for that. There's no mention anywhere to say it's looking at all the water courses, right, when you say about flood resilience. And I mean, I don't think in Sheffield, apart from around Ponds Forge, we've got a significant flood plain which has already been built on. But again, sort of, I'm assuming that things like building on flood plains could be addressed in planning. And I'd like to see it incorporated in that, even if it, and if we've got no choice, something, oh gosh, go back to Lincolnshire. What they used to do to protect the homes from flooding, have them on the stilts, you know. So there's all sorts of measures you can use to sort of, to ameliorate the fact that people have got to live somewhere. But that should be, again, factored into flooding a bit, you know, into the planning. And I think I'm going to have to sort of go and have a snooze after this, sorry, but I think they're the main points. Thank you.
But thanks, yeah, I mean, I'd just say, yeah, all those seem fine suggestions. It's good to hear someone recognising that electric cars aren't the answer to everything. Yeah, I think it's an important point, we need to actually reduce the number of cars in circulation really. So I guess all those points, they're, to be honest, they're probably already in the work that the officers have done. I don't suppose there's any surprises there, but I guess if you notice, Diane, anything that is new there. Yeah, all good points, I think.
Thank you. Yes, some good comments, observations and directions there, specifically around the mitigations and installations of green roofs and walls, which I don't think we've necessarily touched on.
Yeah, but they do look so attractive. And you just look at some of the, I think it's Singapore where all new builds with balconies have to have green walls around them. I mean, you know, what could, what's the easier way of brightening up a city centre, especially when we've got all these developments and residents in? So that could be there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring in Diane and then Neil.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to talk about the opportunity that is presented to us now by the development of the local development plan and what we need to see captured in there. Because it's not just about, I don't know, redeveloping peatlands or developing meadows for insects or green walls or, or, I mean, we had an, an application at the last plan meeting which had green walls and green roofs, which was very, very welcome. And we're seeing, I think, more of those developments coming through now. But it's also about the transition to alternative heat sources and, and, you know, giving a very strong message out that we don't want developers coming here. We don't want them to stop building the kind of buildings that we need to move us into the future. But neither is it about solely the achieving government house building targets. We might have to do that, but it's the way in which we do that. And I think we've got an opportunity to do some scene setting here and, and I think that's a useful discussion to have. I also want to talk about, I want to, I want to hark back to what Paul said on another matter. Because, I mean, everything we're discussing today is linked anyway. But it's about the issue of councils doing two rather than doing with. And it's about the idea of going forwards. And all of us in this room, we, you know, you're preaching to the converted, we've, we've been, we've been with you on this journey through the, through the debates and the change. the debates in the chamber, and the realisation that change has to come, and we're the ones that are going to be leader responsible with our partners for putting it in place. But there's a change then about there are, there are people in the community that will notice the effect of climate change, you know, with the extreme weathers and what have you. But won't relate that to the plans and strategies going forwards. And yes, we can talk to children in schools, we can, you know, we can develop a new generation. But the people out there that are currently struggling to, to survive, because we've been through a very bad 18 months, and it's not going to get better any time soon. They have to see that it's not the council doing something to them to punish them, because they're not, you know, they're not good people, or they're not rich enough to be here, or it has to be an explanation about how we change. Because we want to go forwards and thrive together as a community. And I think that's the dialogue, and that's the communication that we need to start having now, even in advance of developing individual plans and strategies for delivery some way down the line. We need to start talking about this 10-point plan and what it means. I actually don't mind the 10-point plan, because it's snappy, it's, it's sure people will understand. It's 10, 10, 10 points in this that talk about what's going to change. So, but we need to start having that dialogue with, with people who are going to be affected by it, and are going to need to change their behaviours, whether or not they understand that now. So it is a a conversation we need to start having, and that, that was just my point, Chair.
Thank you, Diane.
I think, yeah, I mean, again, all good points. And about the local plan, I mean, the local plan is actually really important for how as a city we address climate change. You know, it's been really important to have input to that when it comes out for consultation. So, yeah, that's good. We've got all those points, so I don't, if there's anything you need to respond to if you do that.
Just, just to add that it's, we're in conversations at the moment around kind of some of those plan, planning policy issues that you mentioned, and the, the, the need to bring forward a supplementary planning document that covers some of those issues, so that, that the kind of momentum behind some of that change kind of starts as soon as possible. And colleagues in planning, Michael Johnson, that you'll know as head of planning, is engaged within those discussions. So that will feature as part of the kind of commitments over the next 12 months within the plan.
And on that point, we'll be bringing Michael and his team to the next meeting, so we can raise some of those points in there. Thank you. Neil, we're waiting very patiently, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. All my points have been raised by other councillors, thank you.
That was very easy and polite of you, thank you, Neil. So Doug, Mark, Victoria, and Tom, thank you for that. And apologies for everyone for making you sit around longer than we needed to. I'm really mindful that we're 50 minutes overdue. But, yeah, I think it reflects the complexity and the enormity of what this committee faces. So, thank you. Oh, going forward, Doug, because obviously you're going to be bringing some stuff back to us, and we'll get a revised look at the plans and everything else. Do you want to touch on that now briefly before officers go?
Yeah, so if this is what you'd like, shall we plan to basically bring the draft 10-point plan, you know, they'll have the actual, the actual plan in it, to the next committee on 10th of November, so they'll come out publicly by 3rd of November, and then discuss through that, see any changes the committee would recommend to that, draw it's passed over to the executive. Does that seem helpful way forward? And then after that, we can decide as a committee what you want to do in terms of monitoring. It might just be a regular item on the work plan, possibly.
Absolutely. I'm looking at Mark and Victoria specifically. Looks like you've been given a substantial undertaking. And we'll look forward to bringing that work back and see where that one goes. Thank you.
So, are you okay? Yeah, no problem. So, we're on to the final item. We've gone through a bit of a marathon, on to ways of working. As we've seen, we have so far adopted a very fluid approach to the work that's brought before us. We will need to do some stuff out, and I know that certainly Paul touched on an element earlier, and it's been repeated several times, about how we engage with other groups, and what other groups we bring into this chamber and into this committee to, to hear what's being done, and to give presentations and information to us. So we'll need to reflect on some of that. We have got some key, key themes that we, we feel we would like to take forward, be it the economic recovery from the pandemic, the ethical procurement strategy. I know that councillor McDonald touched on some of the economy elements that we've got, but there are other things that we need to be doing. And we would like to be having a standalone session, and volunteers from this committee would be welcome, for the 21st of October. We can, we can communicate some of that more information. So far, Barbara and myself have said we'll, we'll chivvy in there. If there's anybody else that wants to come and stick their hand up and, and participate in that ethical procurement stuff, that would be really, really welcome. So we'll pick up on that. And the other thing definitely is about the sustainability of all the works that we're doing, and how that is moved forwards. Barbara, is there anything you want to add to any of that?
Something we've discussed about a possible way forward. I mean, it's such a big remit, and being a rather practical person, I'd like to pick one element from, say, the, the one-year plan. I mean, I looked at supporting Sheffield businesses, which is item three on there. And because we could then sort of look at sort of the elements that we've been introduced to today, and consider how, if we make suggestions or find out about how to support businesses, what's lacking in sort of the discussions we've had, what impact they might have, and whether sort of it's, it's an appropriate thing to have in those strategies. And I've picked that, I mean, because it would incorporate the path to net zero, local centre, the recovery for local centres, it would address pollution, sustainable future, home, homes, or homes, public transport, vibrant culture, skills and employment. So it'd allow us to sort of, just sort of reflect on how, looking at that, we could, you know, whether the plans are valid or not, especially if it's a 10-point plan, which has meant, and climate change is meant to encompass everything. The, the one thing I didn't want to do is to stifle initiative and development, which there's always the danger that if we sort of work on plans in isolation, we can end up doing, which is the unintended consequences. This is just a suggestion, I mean, because it's open to everyone to make a suggestion.
Thank you, Chair. I think at the moment, I think this has been a very free-ranging discussion and meeting, and I think a lot of ideas have come out. And I wouldn't like to tie us down in any one direction at this moment. You know, we, we're having another series of presentations at the next meeting, we've got a workshop set up, and I think we need to do a little bit more learning until we can say, right, okay, let's use that as a tool to represent the journey. I'm not saying it's, you know, that we see the representation of how successful we are with, by picking one element, but I just think it's too soon. I think we need to do more learning at the moment, that's just my, my views.
No, that's fine. It's, it's just a way of sort of testing a few things as we go along. I mean, I've got no issues with anybody objecting, it's throwing ideas in, because then it generates other ideas.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, if you're after ideas, Mark, or observations, we've got a work cut out here. I mean, us putting it mildly, the amount that we're going to have to get through. So I think we have to be careful about adding large numbers of things onto this. I'd love for us to look at this strategic transport plan for the city centre, for example, that, but, would I put that at the top of the list at the moment? Probably not. The biggest thing that I think we need to reflect on is that, you know, the, for this committee to work effectively and efficiently, we need to see the information in advance. So I had not seen this present, I didn't have access to the climate change plan until this meeting. I understand the first draft came back in an email yesterday while we were preparing for full council. And for something that important, that's not very good. So I know everyone's busy, but we really need to see, you know, at least a week in advance. So if there's a, you know, did you really mean to put the fact that we wanted to reduce food consumption on there, is that a type, little things like that we can cover out? But we need to see the material well in advance. I'm also mindful that the discussions around the local plan are coming up, and that's going to be a huge, for us to do our job properly, that's going to be a huge thing.
Thank you. Yes, Paul, do you, yes, can you add?
Thank you. I think there's some, some interesting topics to discuss, and that's, obviously, we've got a long way to go in a short amount of time. And I'm thinking, so you, you know, Mark, because you, you were a cabinet member for a number of years, and obviously, longer than me, I've only been doing it for six months, or thereabouts, or less. But trying to, trying to think how your role as a cabinet member will translate to a committee. And I can see that even during this meeting, we're still automatically like, treating it a bit like a scrutiny of what we've been presented with. And I think the only difference, or perhaps not the only difference, but the standout difference for me is like, when members are suggesting changes to the plan, like where Tim and Martin and others were saying, you know, the word in here is wrong, or should be different, or could be better, that was going into it, you know. And that's, because this needs to make decisions, you know. So, so we as a group need to be doing the job that currently a cabinet member is doing. And, you know, it's not going to be as efficient as just going, yes, do that. I mean, I would like you to do this, can you go and do it, please? You know. So how do we, how do we change our mindsets, and how do we treat this committee that we can make decisions? We are, we're not just making suggestions or having an influence, we are making the decisions. You know, and I think that's important, that we work on that principle. Because after May, in May, that's how it's going to be, isn't it? And so, and so the other thing that I wanted to say is, how, with the other transitional committees, I think it mentioned something in here about different committees trying different things. So, I mean, what are the chances that every committee organically chooses to do the same thing? I don't know. But like, is, is that being, you know, when you have your meetings with all of the chairs and deputy chairs, are you kind of triangulating your tactics as well? I mean, you know, I've given, I've given this a lot of thought, you know, and I was involved in the campaign, and we've discussed this, this for years, you know. But yeah, it's, it's still putting, you know, getting that, doing it. It's tough, isn't it?
Could I just come back on that, just an observation? Yeah, the, the difference between scrutiny and challenge, I think, is a very fine one. But it definitely is our role, if, if something's presented to this committee, to do our job properly. If we either want to challenge something because, you know, in our views it's, it's not appropriate or correct, or we want to challenge it just to, you know, give it, it's like kicking the tyres on a car, you know, would you buy it? For me, that is still part of our role, so long as we do it in a constructive way. Can't just rubber stamp stuff.
So I think, I think from my viewpoint, I, I was guilty, I'm probably the most guilty of this one ever. I like to get on and do stuff. I'm mindful that that doesn't necessarily mean I'm going in the right direction. We aren't just scrutiny, we are more than that. And I think some of the work that we've already done in the previous presentation that Doug brought to us, it did sort of start to address that of formulating policy going forward. But we do need to work, look at how we can make sure we aren't all doing the same thing in necessarily the same way. That will be part of the governance committee to take forward, and we will be feeding back to that, our understanding, our learnings. We will be having a reflective process on today's meeting at some stage, probably tomorrow, where we can think about what we've got to do and what we've done. We were looking to think about what work, plans we take forward. Obviously, we've got some short-term stuff around like the economic elements, like the 10-point plans and such like. We do need to bring more stuff back, and we need to make sure that we get a lot more information very much in advance. Because like, like, Martin has said, it's always, it's always quite frustrating, certainly when we've had a full council the night before, to be trying to deal with stuff. That does, that does feel a bit difficult. But I think that's also a reflection in the way that we're trying to work at pace and work nimbly. I'm just not sure that we as an organisation have maybe caught up with ourselves and where we need to be on that one. So we'll, we'll take all those reflections on board. And I think between Barbara and myself, and we'll liaise with the rest of the committee as frequently as we can, we'll, we'll come back to you guys with some, some more information and some more thoughts and perspectives. And certainly, I think for the next one, we'll have Doug's item come back, and Transforming Cities, transport stuff. And if we can get the information as early as we can, he can yet more pressure on the likes of Tom, and Mark, and Victoria, we will. And I welcome that element. So I think, shall we wrap it up there for now? Barbara, do you want to add? Yeah?
Well, I don't know how quick it would be. I mean, sort of, we discussed about sort of all the outside agencies that might be interested in our input, and maybe sort of asking who they are, and just inviting them not to, not to sort of come and present and attend, but just to alert them to the fact that we're having a discussion, so that if they hear about anything, they can then feed it back to us, just to sort of widen the, the pool, if you like, of information.
And on that one specifically, there were questions about having the Chamber of Commerce and others listening to what's being said, certainly around the city centre development plan. So if members have key groups, key interested partners, ideas about who we need to be adding to the map of people that we write out to, send invitations to, that would be really, really welcome. Because more than anything, again, it comes back to what you were saying, Paul, about not doing to people, but doing with people. But also making sure that those groups aren't just gatekeepers, but are truly representative of the city and everything else. So, so if, if people want to start feeding those names in, those groups in, and then we'll make Alice's life a nightmare, trying to write out and communicate to everyone, sorry, Alice, we'll, we'll start setting those, those networks in place. So to an extent, it'll be like the Green City Partnership Board, but more pertinent to this, this particularly committee's remit. Yeah?
I'm looking for consent or otherwise.
Does, does that feel like a, a good way forward?
It would be good if we could invite some of those citizen, citizens, or, you know, people from the outside organisations to the next meeting, if possible, and get them involved. You know, that was really high on the agenda, I think, of, of when, you know, from the referendum and the discussions. And even when we said we were going to do it, you know, when the referendum was successful, we were going to introduce it, it was definitely said that it was going to be done with people involved as well. So getting them involved next time, please, if possible. So getting them involved next time, please, if possible.
Yes, Chair, it was, it, it's also about involving communities, not, let's not get high bound by, by, you know, the usual partners. It's, it's the community partners as well, because if we're talking about issues that are going to affect where people live and grow in this city, if they can, if they can just log in and listen to the conversation or if they feel they have something that they want to contribute, I think we've not got to forget the people aspect of it. Going back to your point about people, the people aspect of things. People are, if we're creating an environment where people are going to thrive and, and develop opportunities, then, you know, they should at least know about it or be allowed to hear or contribute if they, if they so wish.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Diane. We've got fifteen minutes before we need to evacuate the room. So if we can put out a call for members of the committee to start pointing forward, people that we want to be bringing in and, and better ways of communicating partners than we should do, that'd be really, really helpful and we'll endeavour to try and start that ball rolling. Yeah? Thank you.
I mean, feel free to email suggestions to me. But what I've noted down is I'm going to email you all about any kind of learning that you want to forward on from the session today generally, not the topics. And I'll also remind you about any input on the kind of people, Sheffielders, who you want to hear from.
Even if it's just a case of sort of having one named person from any kind of organisation, community, business, whatever, that sort of we can tell them what's on the agenda, we can, we can send them minutes and just alert them to the fact that this is happening. Because even as informal as that's going to sort of help spread the word.
Thank you. And on that note, I, I feel we can wrap, wrap up for today. Thank you for your indulgence, thank you for allowing me to overrun so significantly on the agenda. I hope you still have caused too much issue for everybody else. And really apologies to officers for pointing up with us and my appreciation for that, thank you.
Does that mean you're buying us lunch?
Nice try.